Good evening and welcome to the September 16th meeting of the East Point City Council. Madam Deputy City Clerk, roll call please.
Present, we have Councilmember Shropshire.
No, call each of their names and then.
Oh, Councilmember Shropshire. Councilmember Freedley. Councilmember Ziegler. Councilmember Cummings. Councilmember Mitchell. Councilmember Butler. Councilmember Martin Rogers. Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you so much. Our Sergeant at Arms this evening is Officer. Say your title, I know you all had a lot of promotions, so I don't want to mess it up. Name and title.
Lieutenant.
Lieutenant, I know we had a lot of promotions, so thank you so much for your service this evening. Please, do we have, let me see if I have any. Who? Pastor Mobley? Pastor Mobley, be ye also ready again, would you mind providing the invocation this evening, followed by the pledge of the flag if we can all stand, please.
Let's pray. We are blessed beyond the measure of all the things you've done for us just the moment that we have this life. So we want to be of service. Thank you for this mayor and the city council, and the work that they're doing to make our lives better here in East Point. Bless them, bless all the employees of this city. Bless their efforts as they serve us to make it better for us. And help us as citizens to recognize and respect the work, the untiring efforts that they do for us. It's in the name of our God we pray, amen.
So we have a very special recognition tonight, I just want to make sure that all of the Kelsey families here, anyone that you're expecting, if not, we can go, you're good? Okay, so we're just going to change the order of the presentations, and Councilmember Martin Rogers, I'll have you open it up.
All right, good evening. Tonight, we are going to recognize Dr. Kelsey, who is on the road to 100. We're going to recognize his almost 100th birthday tonight. He has been a community advocate, a public servant, a teacher, he has worn many, many hats throughout his tremendous and remarkable lifetime. So tonight, we would like to recognize you and honor you, Dr. Kelsey.
So the road to 100, can you turn around so people, make sure the cameras get what 99 looks like? I know, right? So Dr. Kelsey, in recognition of your road to 100, we have a proclamation prepared, and after the proclamation, we're going to take pictures with the family, we'll all come down. But as you can imagine, for someone who is reaching a century, approaching a century, the accomplishments are voluminous. There are many, but not only are they impressive accomplishments, they're impactful. And I want to say thank you for your impact on your community for almost a century. We greatly appreciate you, we greatly value you, and know that you moved to East Point with your children and grandchildren, and we are glad to have someone like you within our community. So, in recognition of Dr. Mariba Richard C. Kelsey. Whereas Dr. Mariba Richard C. Kelsey has always been passionate about serving his community and helping to uplift people wherever he has lived. Born and reared in the Pittsburgh community of Atlanta, Georgia, Dr. Kelsey learned early that life, the life of a community depends upon the sincere commitment and contributions of its members. And whereas along his path, he has also grown to understand the importance of respecting and honoring his elders and ancestors, and working toward unity in our community as he lives his life with these understandings and guiding forces. And whereas, after matriculating through Atlanta's Crogman Elementary and Booker T. Washington High Schools, Dr. Kelsey completed a tour of duty in the U.S. Army Air Corps during World War II, and later attended Tuskegee Institute University, where he was a campus leader and a charter member of Gamma Phi Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated in 1948. He later earned graduate degrees from Kent State University and Ohio State University, where he earned a PhD in counselor education. And whereas, Dr. Kelsey's professional contributions continued long after his retirement. As a licensed psychologist and clinical counselor, he provided ongoing clinical services in private practice, and his contributions to the community have been a common thread throughout his life pre and post-retirement. Recognizing the importance of strong institutions in the Black community, Dr. Kelsey has been instrumental in the development, support, and operations of several, including the founding of Umosia Sasa Shuli, an African-centered independent school in Columbus, Ohio in 1971. And whereas, as an extension of the African Center in 1988, Dr. Kelsey co-founded the Afrocentric Personal Development Shop, Inc., APDS, a behavioral health center that specializes in prevention, treatment, and recovery of substance abuse and domestic violence intervention education. And the Tawi Family Village, which began in 2002, is another extension of the African Center that conducts study groups, cultural celebrations, and community events for all ages. And whereas, APDS and the Tawi Family Village have continued even since he and his wife relocated to Atlanta, Georgia in 2010 to be closer to their grandchildren, and in East Point, in my neighborhood, Lakeside Preserve. Whereas, Dr. Kelsey has played an active role in the African National Rights of Passage United Collective, in which he served as a trainer of trainers and presiding elder for many years, while also being an ordained elder in the Presbyterian Church. Elder Kelsey has been a longtime member of the Association of Black Psychologists, formerly serving as a national treasurer and on its Council of Elders. An active member of the Association for the Study of Classical African Civilization since its 1984 founding, he currently serves on its Council of Elders and as chair of his building fund committee. And whereas, Dr. Kelsey serves on several local and national boards, and is the recipient of numerous awards and recognitions for his personal, professional, and community service. At 99 years of age, he continues to work and provide his wisdom towards the development of a strong African community, as he believes and is frequently known to say that, "We will win." Therefore, be it resolved that I, Deana Holiday Ingram, Mayor of the City of East Point, along with the city council, do hereby proclaim, September 16th, 2024, as Dr. Mariba Richard C. Kelsey's Road to 100 Day, in the City of East Point, and join with his family and friends to honor, celebrate, and extend our heartfelt well wishes on his upcoming centenarian 100th birthday, and wish him many more happy and fulfilling years. Happy road to 100.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you so much.
You are welcome.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm convinced that you're once an adult, twice a child. And because these surprises, I was told just to appear. And I'm very grateful to the council, the mayor, Councilman Rogers particularly, she secretly, secretly set this up. Certainly, I'm not gone yet, I'm not finished, I want to serve New Orleans, I intend to do things in this community too. And I hope that, as you hear about those things, that everybody will be in support. Because I believe that we can be a strong community wherever we are, and we can be the best that we all can be if we join together in unity and in strength. So, thank you so much for this recognition, and I hope that I can live up to the foot you've set up for me.
Absolutely, you already have. All right, we will now move to the presentation regarding the 2024 Benefit Program Carrier Renewals. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. This item particularly is a go over our group health insurance benefits, if Ms., I'm sorry, Iris, I was looking at Michelle, I'm sorry, if Ms. Jessie could really take us through the side of it, thanks.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. We are very happy to bring to you information on the 2025 benefits, the research and the reviews that have been conducted by the staff of Benelitix, our benefits broker. You all may recall, in January of this year, we made a switch from Humana to Aetna. Aetna already has some of our business, but Humana, if you remember, we informed you that they were getting out of the group insurance business. And of course, that included various municipalities such as East Point. We were fortunate to put out a request for proposal, well, we didn't, our broker did, and after many submissions, you approved of us engaging with Aetna. So tonight, staff from Benelitix will give you a little bit of an overview of how our plan has been working thus far, remembering that we only started this in January of this year. So it took a bit of time to get some representative information from Aetna on how the plan was progressing. I'm going to call up John Yuhasz and Norma Robertson, who will go over their review with you of the plan, and also some information of what we're proposing for 2025. So, Norma and John?
Thank you very much, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. Just to get the right.
I'll need you to talk into the mic for me.
Okay.
Yep.
We need to, we have a power presentation we'd like to share.
So Deputy City Clerk, if you could stay there and help them and click so they can talk to them.
Yeah, this one right here. Yeah, perfect.
Can you put in, share slide?
Can we put in slide mode?
Great, thank you very much, and again, thank you for the council for the opportunity to be here. We've got a fair amount of information, which we'll go through as quickly as we can, we know you have a full agenda, but again, we appreciate the opportunity. So what we're looking at are a list here of the various benefit programs, and those that are shaded are ones that have renewal increases. So in short, the life and disability plans, the first two, there's no increase, the rates are guaranteed. The medical, the Medicare Advantage, and the dental programs all have increases, and of course, we'll spend the majority of the time on the medical, since that's the largest component, but they all have increases, which we'll discuss in more detail in the next couple of pages. The Vision Program is still under a rate guarantee, so there's no change there, and there is a small increase on the administrative services for these flexible spending accounts, the pre-tax accounts that employees participate in, and the COBRA administration. So those are very small changes to the administrative fees, which are typical year to year. And then the voluntary benefit programs, there's no change to those programs this year as well. I'm going to turn it over to my associate, Norma Robertson, and let her walk through the medical piece.
Okay, thank you. As mentioned earlier, the medical for your active and your pre-65 retirees is the most significant component of the benefit program at East Point. As Iris mentioned, the city moved from Humana after they exited the business on January 1st of 2024, and placed the business with Aetna. We are only several months, well, now we're in, got eight months' worth of information from this new contract with Aetna, but we knew going into the contract that we wanted to make sure there was a cap for the uncertainty in the second and subsequent year. So as part of the market assessment, and going out and verifying that Aetna was the best fit for the city, we negotiated a not-to-exceed renewal in the second year of 14.3%. I'll share with you what's driving that increase, but just as a point of reference, the actual data that is emerging under the Aetna contract is trending at 30% when we looked at it from independent underwriting. So the fact that the original contract negotiations included this cap has worked to the advantage of the city. With the 14.3%, that equates to a budget increase going into 2025 of $833,841 for the year. We'll talk about how that increase can be shared as we look at employee contributions. The drivers of healthcare spend, you're seeing it in the newspaper, you read about it in a lot of what other employers are seeing as renewal increases for this year. The underwriting approach shows, at the very top of this page, that the data that is emerging specific to the City of East Point is trending 37% above the premiums that are being paid by the city. That's just claims to premiums paid, there's no administration expense or profit. When they did the underwriting, where we know that 14.3% that they have proposed, and that cap has come into play, is justified when we look back at the combination of Humana's data and Aetna's data and independently underwrite. Healthcare trend, just as a point of reference, is approximately 11% going into 2025, primarily driven by pharmaceutical spend is the number one driver. In the sense of the city, you can see to the bottom left, that there are some fairly significant large claimants that are emerging within the data, that also is part of the underwriting process. And then lastly, but equally important, is what's happening to the healthcare systems in general. The consolidation, you see that in Atlanta through the various health networks that are in play. There's a lot of those contracts came under renegotiation, and so we're seeing that coming through as a point of claim driver, claim cost driver. So with that said, as I showed earlier, the 14.3% equates to $833,000. Today, on the left, we have two options, we have a high option at 85% coinsurance, a low option at 80% coinsurance, and in this chart to the left, you can see the employee contributions on a monthly basis, that is, not per pay period, because those can vary. So we also have some differences between the contributions for first responders and all other employees of the City of East Point. Over to the right is the most recent survey data as a barometer to measure the competitiveness of those contributions. And as you can see, primarily on the employee-only coverage, you are low compared to three different benchmarks. The first being the size of your employee population, there's a slice for 50 to 499 employees. The second is the governmental sector, that's state and local, and then the southern region, which are, you know, south, southern states. And in all three slices for employee-only, the contributions today are very competitive. You can see the monthly cost today, and what survey data for 2023 shows for comparable coverage. Family, you're probably at the 50th to 60th percentile, depending on which slice of the benchmark data is evaluated, so there is some room there as well to be much more competitive than survey data. Next, we'll talk about two alternatives, and actually, there's three alternatives. If I can turn to my page. The first is, you don't have to change employee contributions at all. And with that, employees, no change to the plan design itself, but the budget for the City of East Point will increase 833,000, or in effect, going from 4.946 million to 5.78 million. Alternative one says that the plan got a 14.3% rate increase, let's share that equally with the employees of East Point. And you can see the increases vary depending on whether you're in the 85% option or the 80th, as well as whether you are covering yourself or your family. Another alternative is also shown, if, looking at 14.3% increase, we've also run an increase to employees of the plan of 7.5%. To the right, you can see the impact. We started, if we do nothing, at $833,000 increase. The first alternative, which is sharing equally, reduces that for the City of East Point to 707,000, or if we take a more moderate step, 767,000. John, you want to talk about the Medicare Advantage?
Do we continue on, or, okay. The Medicare Advantage Program is the medical coverage through Medicare Advantage that the city offers to retirees, as well as surviving spouses and other dependents that would qualify for that. The city partially funds that program, and has at the same level for a number of years. Typically, these programs go up and down in cost. We had a big change, though, that is effective 1-1-2025 with the Inflation Reduction Act. So essentially, the government is shifting costs from the government over to private insurers for these programs, but in return, they're making them a better program for a majority of the participants. The big change has been the closing of the donut hole, so instead of the current 8,000 out-of-pocket limit that you have to achieve, it's being reduced down to 2,000. So essentially, the donut hole with Medicare goes away. Now unfortunately, there's a cost to enhancing these benefits that gets passed along to employees from the insurance companies, but that was one big change. There was also a significant change in the federal insurance subsidy, it's less. So the insurance companies that were being subsidized to some degree are being subsidized less. And then there were changes to the pharmaceutical discount benefit programs within these plans. So there were a lot of factors that came into play, and the end result with the current plan, you have Aetna, which you've had for a number of years and get very good reviews from retirees who participate in this plan, was a 20.8% cost increase. And again, on the left-hand side midway, you can see the city currently funds and has approximately 61% of the costs for the retirees, and less for split dependents and such. The lower left shows the 24, the current year, and then the 2025 cost, and the city could pass on the entire increase to employees, or they could share in the cost. And because a 20% increase on the retiree Medicare Advantage is significant to retirees, you may want to give consideration to sharing that increase, which would represent a lower cost to the participants of $26.50 per month. So over on the right is really just a summary of the 2024, the current year, and then the renewal costs and the total annual cost. And then down to the bottom, on the lower right, is the total increase based on that 20.8% increase, renewal increase, and then the cost share, if the city were to share that, the budget increase would be the 47,382 amount. We did look at competitive pricing, we went to the market, and we looked at, there's really four main players, and three of those players were higher in costs. So we did validate that the Aetna renewal was fair, comparing apples to apples on plan designs. So we did take a look at that to make sure that they were in line with the market, and they were actually very favorable. And again, to mention, you do get a lot of very good reviews from retirees regarding the Aetna program, which has been in place for a number of years. The next page is the dental increase, and this is a small increase that's occurring. The dental program is partially funded and partially contributory from employee. It's a 5% increase this year, and as Norma mentioned, on medical trend being about 11%, dental is a lower number, but the majority of this increase is a result of dental trend. There's industry factors that have changed in the dental market too, a lot of dentists have retired early, COVID pushed a lot out, there's been reluctance for them to expand out of network coverage, so there are a lot of cost drivers in this increase as well. And the two charts, top left show the current rates, and then the new increased rates, and then the lower chart on the left, and I'm sorry, I'll also mention, there's three different dental plans that employees have options to. The DHMO, which is a HMO-type program, and then there's a low and a high option. But the chart on the lower left shows if the city passes on the full increase to the employees, the cost impact per month, or if you were to share in that cost, which is an option, but these are relatively small increases, being a dental premium. And then over on the right side at the bottom, you can see the cost differences if the totals passed on to the participants in that plan, or if the city were to share in those costs. Did I miss anything?
No, you're fine.
So in summary, these are essentially the three decisions. So in summary, these are essentially the three decisions that the council will need to assess and eventually decide on. The medical and the contribution levels, again, no change to employee rates, share the cost equally, or don't share quite as much with the employee, depending again on, you know, decisions that the council makes. Medicare Advantage, either the full amount of the increase can be passed on to the retirees, or you have the option, again, of sharing in that cost increase equally, or at a different percentage, but for simplicity, it's usually an equal share. And then the dental, same decision, either pass the increase on to the employees, or that can be shared as well. And that's the conclusion.
Are there any questions?
I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jesse first to let us know if there's any action being requested, and then I'll go to council.
Madam Mayor and Council, we are not requesting action tonight. We know that this is a lot of information to digest, but we wanted to get it before you so that you can have an opportunity to review it and give us, or think about the questions or additional information you may want. And of course, we'll work with Benelitix to get that information to you for honor before the next meeting.
When you say the next meeting, do you mean council meeting or work session?
It depends on your wishes. If you all want to do it at a work session, we certainly can bring that back and spend whatever time you need to review it again, answer questions, discuss it. It's up to you.
And from a timeline perspective, when would you like council to make, when would you like to have a decision from?
Yes, ma'am. So the plan year begins January 1st. By staying with Aetna, we don't have to go through the full-blown open enrollment. It would be more of a passive open enrollment for the employee medical. There is a date in October, however, for the Medicare Advantage, because that open enrollment begins in October.
What date in October?
It's October 15th. But keep in mind, too, that we have to communicate and distribute enrollment materials to retirees through the mail. So we really need to back that up to allow some time to postal delivery and such. But the National Medicare Advantage enrollment starts October 15th.
So our next council meeting is October the 7th. That's the earliest we'd be able to have the presentation. I was hoping maybe a work session discussion, but the 15th is the day after our work session. So let's probably put it on the October 7th meeting agenda. And then if we could send questions along the way if there are any, and then come back on the 7th.
Yes, ma'am. And I'd also like to thank you all for your continued support of this very important benefit for our employees and also our retirees.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And I guess we'll be seeing you on October 7th. Thank you. Next up is the final report on the Neighborhood Assessment and Revitalization Plan for the East Washington River Park and Center Park neighborhoods, presented by Mosaic Community Planning. Mr. Brown.
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, a couple of years ago, we had, we retained the surface of Mosaic Community Planning. They're here this evening to go over the final report. If I could get Janice Elias to kind of walk us through where we're at and where we're
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Janice Elias, Assistant City Manager for the city of East Point. This evening, along with Ms. Melissa Malu of Mosaic Community Planning, would like to present to you the final report for the housing need assessment and neighborhood plan for the East Washington River Park and Center Park neighborhoods. As many of you know, this particular process started last year as a result of participating within the GIC initiative, as well as some other initiatives that have taken place within the city, and recognize that three, these three particular communities were the three communities we wanted to start with to address some of those issues and other issues surrounding housing in those areas. So Mosaic Community Planning was the consultant that was selected to assist us in that process. And tonight, Ms. Malu will go over the results of that process.
Thank you. And thank you all for having me here tonight. Too excited. Oh, okay. So as a little bit of background, as Janice mentioned, the goals for this plan were to look at how the city could expand the variety of housing options available in the legacy neighborhoods that this plan was looking at, thinking both on the rental and homeownership side. We wanted to look at ways to improve and maintain housing, particularly thinking that we want to look for ways that residents who are currently residing in the neighborhoods will be able to continue to live there, even as market changes and maybe home prices increase, that there is opportunity for folks to stay within the neighborhood. To look at ways to address blighted and vacant properties, and to encourage access to community resources. And finally, this work built on previous work that the city has done, both as part of the GIC program, also as part of the 50 Worst Properties Program. So kind of looking at what is the next step in this process. These are the three neighborhoods that we looked at, so Center Park, East Washington, and River Park. The idea was that these strategies would be specific to these neighborhoods, but based on the outcomes of putting them in place, might be something that could be extrapolated to other parts of the community if the city desired. So a big part of this was working with folks within the neighborhoods. We started off about a year ago, I think last summer, with a kickoff meeting that included all three neighborhoods, but then did individual meetings at neighborhood association meetings. So one where we were kind of hearing about what are the issues within the neighborhood, what would they like to see into the future, and then a follow-up meeting presenting some strategies and getting feedback on them. So altogether, I think there were about a little over 75 participants that either took a survey or joined one of the meetings and provided inputs. So we have a good bit in the report there that I think you all have a copy of about what we heard from the community, but maybe some quick highlights. I think one of the key things that we were asking is, thinking into the future, what housing types would you like to see here? So that's kind of the question that you see on this slide here. And there was some variation within the neighborhoods. So I think in River Park, when they were thinking about vacant lots, they maybe spoke most conservatively about wanting to focus on single-family homes there and not see apartments or multifamily housing. So that's what you saw there. And then I think in other neighborhoods, there was a little bit more opportunity for more diverse housing types in terms of what people would like to see. So kind of retaining a traditional neighborhood character, but some opportunity for townhomes, apartments, duplexes, and the like. So that was kind of what we were keeping in our mind going forward. We also heard from folks that they wanted to see opportunities for homeownership, so existing homeowners, but also perhaps young households that would like to own a property in East, or, excuse me, in East Point, that there are opportunities for homeownership for kind of a wide range of income bands. So, you know, based on that input, we developed a series of goals and strategies for the city for these three neighborhoods. And I think one of the things that we kind of kept in mind as we were doing that is what resources already exist in Georgia, in metro Atlanta, that we could coordinate and bring to residents here, so that everything wasn't kind of building something new, but maybe facilitating access to existing programs. But one of the first goals that we discussed, and I think that neighborhoods were supportive of, was looking for a way to redevelop tax delinquent parcels as the type of housing that neighborhoods wanted to see. So the city has a function to do that, which is the Urban Redevelopment Agency, which has been in place but not active. So kind of that first goal is looking at different ways that the city may put that URA back into operation or into operation. So that could be where the URA is kind of operating on its own to own, take ownership of those delinquent properties and do things like put out an RFP, or, you know, do something where you are soliciting proposals for development that the city would like to see within the neighborhood. So it could be something that the city kind of handles on its own. It could also be just something that's done through a partner, so like the Metro Atlanta Land Bank, where the land bank would ultimately have control of the property, and they would be the ones kind of doing that legwork of looking for a developer. So that goal, kind of the strategies there relate to what type of process the city would like to see, and then doing some exploration of, if desired, partnership with the land bank. But eventually, what that would look like is when there is a delinquent or abandoned property, the city would be able to take ownership of it and then put it back onto the market, working with developer partners. And to put it out as housing that the city wants to see. So this report doesn't necessarily prescribe specific price points or things like that. That's something that you can kind of work on as you are doing an RFP. But you see from the neighborhood what folks do you want to see there. The second goal that we identified was ways to repair housing that is in poor condition. So making sure that we're expanding the lifespan of existing housing. So one of those, already a strategy that the city has in action, that kind of happened as we were doing this project, but advertising and implementing the ARPA-funded minor home repair program, and making sure that information about how to apply gets to residents in those legacy neighborhoods. But onward, exploring partnerships with nonprofit home repair organizations, things perhaps like Habitat's Brush with Kindness program. There are a few others operating in metro Atlanta that I think we have listed in the report. So exploring possible partnerships there and what those might look like. Also, as maybe a longer-term strategy, looking at working with local banks who could provide some initial capital for a revolving loan fund. So helping folks, not a grant to make home repairs, but a no or low-interest loan that would help them do that. Then we have some strategies for working with existing and future homeowners. And I think these is where, these are where we are really trying to bring in existing resources. So to provide support for existing homeowners, we have some strategies about working with legal service agencies, so Atlanta Legal Aid or Georgia Legal Services, kind of reaching out to them and seeing what some partnership might look like for some ways to facilitate services to residents. So that could be things like helping folks apply for tax abatements, helping them appeal property tax increases that they felt should be appealed, avoiding home purchase scams. So that's something that I know in southern parts of Atlanta, and I think the county as well, that a lot of times existing homeowners get targeted for purchase scams. So helping folks recognize and avoid those. What to do if you're facing foreclosure, kind of how you might be able to work out your loan, kind of how could those legal services get into neighborhood residents? So that might look something like a semi-annual workshop. It might look like a quarterly event where there's some information like that provided, or an annual housing fair. Could be a variety of avenues to do that. And I think that all of the neighborhood associations seems pretty interested in working with the city and each other to do that. That fourth goal is related to supporting residents attaining homeownership. So here our suggestion is to look at ways to partner with DCA and bring their Georgia Dream Program to East Point residents. So that provides down payments, assistance, and access to lending for first-time homebuyers. And there's different qualifications, but there's also some additional funding for folks who are kind of police, educators, nurses. So this is a state program that could be, I think, better facilitated to residents. And that could happen kind of in that same, an annual housing event where there are folks who are providing legal services, who are helping people learn about the program, could happen through a mortgage readiness classes through partners. So variety of avenues that could work there, and I think that other cities in the metro Atlanta area have used. Then the next goal is perhaps a little bit simpler, but looking at revising the city's permitting process for habitable accessory structures, and making that just an administrative process. So if someone brings in an application and it meets the requirements written in the city's code, that they could receive that approval, just kind of administratively, without having to go through any other hoops. And then the last two goals that we had really focused less on housing and more kind of on the neighborhood and environment. We heard pretty strongly from residents that they really want to see more community art in their neighborhoods and placemaking. So things like murals or signs with neighborhood names, collaboration with students, looking at ways to have public art at neighborhood landmarks. And I think was something that we heard really strongly and kind of meets with some resources that the city has already through its public art commission. So kind of coordinating those two efforts. And then lastly, the seventh goal is focused on improving community infrastructure and resources. So I would say that was something that we heard pretty strongly from community residents, that a lot of times they perhaps have heard about improvements that are coming, and then they don't see them and they lose track of kind of what's happening with them. So a way to make sure that folks who perhaps feel a little disengaged have that information to their neighborhood associations out in the neighborhood, so they know, you know, when sewer improvement, waterline repairs or improvements are coming, sidewalk improvements are coming, things like that. So I think that's a strategy that we heard pretty strongly, people wanting to see a bit more communication there. And I think in addition to things that are planned, we heard kind of about the need for increased walkability, traffic calming, and things like that, that could perhaps make it into the city's public works program into the future. So a quick overview of the work. Happy to answer any questions or provide any other information I could.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, ma'am. What's your name?
Melissa Malu.
Melissa? Last name?
Malu.
Thank you for a very thorough report, Melissa.
Thanks.
I found some of the things in your report very interesting that we could capitalize on. I wanted to raise a couple of questions. One of the things you mentioned was tax delinquent properties. In your study, were you able to come up with a number?
So, no, I think that we were, you built in some of the information from the 50 Worst Properties Program. So I think that the only number we would have would be from that program, which I don't know off the top of my head. Sorry.
That's fine. And one of the things I want to piggyback on, during homeowner support, in April of 2021, I with County Commissioner Abdul Rahman did a program with NACA.
Okay.
Where we tried to encourage homeownership in the city. My question is, is this something that you think that we should facilitate that conversation with nonprofits like NACA, or should we contract that out to a third party who helps us to do that?
Um, so I think the way that we had kind of pictured it would be Um, so I think the way that we had kind of pictured it would be working through DCA and working with their representatives. So I've done some work in Gainesville, Georgia, which is also a GIC community. And they do sort of some community events like that where they will have a DCA rep come and kind of explain the program to people. So that was sort of what we were contemplating. But I think there would also be opportunities, if you wanted to do something more intensive or kind of on a continuing basis, to contract that out to an organization. I don't, I don't know that I have like a model program in mind, but I think that's something we could look into and see if.
And for the public that's watching this on television, could you define DCA?
Yes, certainly. The Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Freely.
Thank you for your presentation. It's very interesting information. Councilmember Butler actually asked my first question about the total number of delinquent properties. But could you just talk a little bit more about the process of how you captured this information? Were these group meetings? Were they focus groups? Were they one-on-one interviews?
Sure.
How did you record this information?
Yeah, sure. So we did an initial kickoff meeting and that was a pretty large group and had some questions where folks provided inputs either out loud or written on like post-it notes that we then collected. But we also went to each of the neighborhood association meetings and had a discussion with their members at the meetings. And then a third method was through a survey. So folks who maybe couldn't come to a meeting could provide written input through a survey. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, are you asking that we approve this report? Or is there any action requested from council? Before you respond to that, council, you can stay, Mr. Lights, Councilmember Martin Rogers.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your presentation. I am aware of the information that you collected during this time. But I guess my question is, for the interim city manager, oftentimes we get these reports, but how do we move forward? Because I've been asking about housing for police officers, council member. Shropshire has had some items on the agenda and this, this presentation appears to be in direct correlation of where everyone is trying to go with those abandoned houses or bank-owned properties or just our properties that she is talking about in this report. But how do we move forward and what does that look like? I see that there is no action tonight, but if you could just give a brief synopsis. It's no action required tonight, but we have the information. We know what's on hand. What do we do with the report now that we have it?
Yes, that's a great question. So this is, this is history. So I guess two years ago, or in '23, we did a solicitation to look at affordable housing and look at establishing some primary goals and objectives so staff could get a roadmap on how to line up our resources here internally with that. And since that time, we've had some directives, individual presentations from the council members. And so that is the challenge, to take the previous direction, the previous information, and bring it all together, what we've heard from the council individually and collectively, and put together a plan. This is just a presentation and a deliverable, if I'm not mistaken, that that was a result of the RFP, which was to provide this information to the council. So now our challenge would be to get staff engaged so that we can take everything that what we've heard from the dais and to include in this report as well, so.
All right, so this was a report. Thank you for, again, a thorough report and the work that you've done with our community through community engagement and providing information with us. That came from the community is also from your expertise and recommendations as it relates to how we can look at our area of revitalization for East Washington River Park and Center Park. I know that's a component of the GIC Work, Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. And so at what's the next steps?
So next steps actually would include, I'm actually going to forward a copy of the report to the planning department. I understand that they just went through a comprehensive plan update process. But as we know, comp plans are fluid documents. And because we have a little bit more insight into what these particular neighborhoods are looking for with respect to housing, this is an opportunity to possibly update the comprehensive plan. But additionally, it will also be forwarded to economic development because this is good timing. Because under economic development, they're now working on updating their strategic plan and housing is a component of economic development. So this information will also be forwarded to them as well as their consultant for incorporation into the update to the strategic plan. Additionally, we talked about the Urban Redevelopment Agency that was created. I know there have been some concerns over the years. So I've kind of been thinking about maybe how that legislation could be adopted so that it would be a little bit more palatable for each of the council members. Because that actually is one of the tools that you all, as the legislative body, have put in place that we can actually use right now to deal with properties that are currently under the ownership of the city's name. They could actually be transferred to the Urban Redevelopment Agency to act upon for redevelopment, whether it be through an RFP process or some other type of solicitation process to actually get those properties redeveloped and back on our tax rolls, but then also meet those needs that you all have expressed about public safety personnel possibly living within a community, educators living within a community. So there are some other tools that we've actually adopted that are ripe for implementation. So tonight, again, it was just to make sure you all saw the results of the assessment. But then to let you know, we will be distributing it to departments that are related to housing.
Let me ask you, you mentioned properties owned by the city. About how many total properties do we own and what types of properties? I know we own our commercial, our city housing, those buildings. But the types of buildings that you're referring to or properties that you're referring to for revitalization or redevelopment?
So the ones I'm referring to are seven properties that were actually deeded over to the city under the 50 Worst Properties Program. One of them is the former West Woodbury site, which is probably the largest one of all of them, which is a prime opportunity for redevelopment, whether it be for some form of multifamily or duplex garden-type style housing. But that opportunity is there. The other ones are single-family structures or there were single-family structures because a few of them are now vacant lots, which allows for an opportunity for new construction of a home. And then there are a few of them that are still existing but need a little care to bring them back into code compliance.
Yeah, it would be helpful if we could get an update on all of the inventory of those properties, what they are, what types of properties they are, where they're located.
Okay, sure will.
I don't see anyone else chiming in, so thank you again so much. And, um, Councilmember Mitch?
Yes, do we have a figure of how many properties are on the 50 worst?
It's still over 200 that are active.
Okay.
We're slowly but surely working through the list. It changes rarely because some properties actually come into compliance. We have a few, we're working with Fulton County now on CDBG because we did mention the BLIT tax and delinquent properties, which the BLIT tax is being assessed on the property tax bills. But I will make a note that once the structure is demolished, we do have to remove that BLIT tax because the tax can only be applied if there is a structure on the property. But it doesn't necessarily remove the lot from the 50 Worst Properties Program.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Our last presentation for this evening is National Search for Permanent City Manager. So I and I'm sure a lot of council members, if not all, have received several questions about where we are with the hiring of our permanent city manager. So I think it's important that we share the information about what the national search entailed with the public so that you are aware of what steps have been taken and where we are now. So on February 19th, 2024, the city council unanimously approved developmental associates to conduct our national search for a permanent city manager. After that, on April 22nd, 2024, I sent an email to all council members with the request from the consultant developmental associates to provide feedback on the job ad that they were going to use for posting a job or recruiting and soliciting applications, as well as the potential dates for the search process. So the different stages within the process, the proposed dates for that. After that, the ad was posted around late April, close of mid-May. We received 581 views for the ad, which yielded 23 non-duplicate applications from people, applicants from over 10, from 10 states plus the District of Columbia. The applicants were from Georgia, Iowa, Illinois, Florida, California, North Carolina, Virginia, Michigan, Arizona, New Hampshire, and then again, the District of Columbia. We had the preliminary screening on May the 16th of 2024. It was a special call meeting. As a part of that process, developmental associates had received resumes and they gathered information and summarized the current and most recent positions and employers within the last five years, the highest degree of the applicants as well as any media that they found regarding the applicants. And in that meeting, we decided to move forward. There were 23 applicants and then 21 of those met the minimum education, educational or government leadership experience. From that 21, we did the preliminary screening on May 16th, 2024, a special call meeting. And the, all of the council members were there except Councilmember Butler and Councilmember Cummins. And at that meeting, we selected 13 applicants to move forward. The next step, after we made that selection of 13, four withdrew. And so developmental associates actually conducted a secondary screening on nine applicants. They included phone interviews and a survey that included questions around economic development, community engagement, working with external agencies and the like. We conducted that meeting on June 3rd, that in executive session, or that screening on executive session on June 3rd, which is our regular council meeting, and all council members were present. After that, we decided and selected from that nine, five to move forward with a virtual interview with mayor and council members. So prior to that, the information was being gathered and conducted and contact was being made by developmental associates. We held the interviews on June 18th. After we selected five, two withdrew. And so there were interview, virtual interviews scheduled for an hour with the remaining three. Everyone, all council members and myself were present except for Councilmember Butler and Councilmember Cummins. Prior to that virtual interview, developmental associates conducted a number of exercises or had the applicants complete a number of exercises, which included a written exercise, a coaching role-play exercise, a meeting exercise, a presentation exercise, as well as an emotional quotient inventory assessment that looked at self-perception, self-expression, interpersonal decision-making, and stress management skills. We conducted those virtual interviews, reviewed the scoring on those exercises as well as the assessment. And from that, at that June 18th special call meeting, or meetings, I should, meeting, yeah, special call meeting with three different interview times, we selected two finalists. The two finalists were invited to come to East Point on July 8th, 2024 to provide a presentation to council in person on their first 90 days on the job. There was a morning meeting and a, so we met with the applicants, breakfast, did a tour of the city. That first applicant did a presentation of their 90-day plan. We then met with the second applicant who started with their 90-day plan, then a tour of the city, lunch, and then a tour of the city. During that process, those processes between those two times, Councilmember Freely, Councilmember Ziegler, Councilmember Shropshire, Councilmember Cummins, and Councilmember Martin Rogers and myself participated in one of both of those. And so at this point, while we've spent over, or actually it's $32,494.43 on a national search, so that includes paying developmental associates as well as covering the cost for the two finalists to come to the city, we have yet to make a decision as to who will be selected to be our actual city manager. Developmental associates did a very thorough job. There was also other exercises within that, but it did a very thorough job. We received, again, applicants from 10 states plus the District of Columbia were able to vet their experience on paper, but also through a number of exercises, be able to get some additional information from them as to how they will perform in certain circumstances, as well as the in-person interviews. And so I wanted to make sure that I share an update with the public regarding this process. I don't know if any council members would like to share any additional information regarding the national search and their, the processes of that. Councilmember Martin Rogers?
Yes, and I would like to go on to say that we worked very hard to hire a city manager. It started in the month of February, I believe. We got all the way to about June. And while the majority of the council members were ready to move forward for a hiring of a city manager, a small minority prevented the decision from being finalized. I've been asked for a couple of weeks now, what is the holdup? So we should, I want to go on record as saying it's a very small minority that prevented us from hiring a permanent city manager. Thank you.
Councilmember Freely.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit on the process that the mayor explained so that the public understands. Am I not? Sorry, sorry about that. In the exercises that the mayor alluded to, that developmental associates led, there were, as the mayor described, a number of segments to that. And those all included, and I can't remember the exact number, it was about five or six local government officials who volunteered their time to participate in the process and facilitate the role-play and the assessments and so on. And we received, I don't know, a two-and-a-half-hour-long video or something of all of their feedback and so forth. So it was a very impressive and thorough process, I felt. And it was very useful to hear, particularly the feedback from not developmental associates, not from us, but from other government officials who actually interacted with these candidates and were able to provide a lot of, a lot of really solid feedback.
So while there hasn't been a decision made thus far, there actually hasn't been a decision made either way. So we still have two finalists to be considered from that, the national search that was conducted. And so I'm hopeful as we move forward, we will get to a level of decision-making as it relates to our permanent city manager. The city manager is responsible for the day-to-day operations and all of the staff in this city except for the city clerk's office and the municipal court. And so, and the, and the legal department. So that's about 600 or so employees. And the level of leadership, guidance, supervision, management, coaching, accountability that is needed. Yes, we as council members can hold the city manager accountable, but that accountability has to trickle down and we need a permanent leader for that vision and leadership and support within the city. And so hopefully within the near future, we'll be making a decision. Councilmember Shropshire.
Thank you, and let me just say, I really hope that we can come to some kind of consensus or agreement to hire a city manager. It was a lot of time and effort put into the whole process in interviewing, taking the time to do the special call meetings. And I know that I get a lot of calls and I know the residents have been asking. So I, I just want to say, I do hope that we can come to some kind of agreement to hire a city manager, something that we need, because right now, we do have an interim. And that's just for a while, but the city still has to move forward. There are things that's needed and things that has to be done. So we do need a, a permanent city manager because there are, are critical departments that need directors. And we need a city manager that's gonna put those key people in place.
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I would just like to say for the record that the current interim city manager received the most votes. He received more votes than any other candidate. And allow me to tell you why. Howard Brown is not afraid to tell people no. We need that type of leadership as our city manager. He brings an experienced base where he has served as city manager all over the country. That is the reason why he received the majority of the votes, to stay his interim. And we would like to give him the authority to do more. And let me tell you why this would not be uncommon. Right now, we have a city attorney who's not present. We know she's not present because she works in multiple cities. And we had that agreement. We had a hybrid agreement with her where she would come in, train a deputy city attorney, and transition that person into the position permanently. The majority of the people who voted for Howard to stay proposed the same process. Because a city manager, despite the qualifications and the experience, it has to be a perfect fit. And we've known from history that sometimes it's difficult to find that fit. But if you have a city manager who brings in a deputy city manager to make sure they train and the city has them on an interim basis, it's less heartburn for everyone. So to say that there was a minority, it wasn't five votes, but it was the majority of the votes for Howard Brown.
So let me just state facts. Howard Brown was not one of the twenty-three applicants. He did not apply to be the permanent city manager. To date, there has been no vote on the finalist, nor Howard Brown. And three is not the majority of seven. So I think other council members, no, I don't see anyone else chimed in and we don't need to belabor this point. But facts are, Howard Brown did not apply, so he can't be one of the candidates. There's been no vote on an interim city manager, I meant permanent city manager out of the two finalists. And there's absolutely been no vote on Howard Brown. And again, three out of, three out of seven is not a majority. So we will move on to our committee reports. We have, the Budget and Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow. The H R committee has an upcoming meeting as well. And H R talking about grievance procedure, as well as evaluation and review of our direct reports. And in budget, we're looking at the budget calendar as well as variance reports. Is there a motion to adopt the council agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Time that I move forward, I double-checked and triple-checked to make sure nobody's lights were on. So there were no lights on, but understanding that now Councilmember light is on, and I'm not sure if she wants to make the motion on the adoption of the council agenda or would like to make a statement as it relates to the national permanent city manager search. But rest assured, I checked my screen several times before I moved forward to make sure nobody else was in. I'll go to Councilmember Cummings, Councilmember Shropshire, and then I'll come to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And my, my statement, my comment will be with regards to the national search for the city manager. And just to kind of echo some of the sentiments of my colleague Butler. True, we do need to have a permanent city manager in place. And one of the reasons that we were in support of interim city manager Howard Brown was because, number one, he is, he is not afraid to say no. But number two, when we talked, when we've, I've polled just a lot of the employees here, they are comfortable with Mr. Brown. With his experience that he brings, I think it's a great opportunity. I think it, it puts the city in a good position. We do have a lot of voids in the city that do need to be filled. And I think it's, because Mr. Brown has been here, he's seen some of the problems, some of the things that are going on, some of the things that the city needs. Because of the experience that he does have, I think that he can help us to fill those voids because I think it's unfair to bring anyone into this situation with all the amount of voice that we have that knows absolutely nothing about the city. And at least if Mr. Brown could kind of put us in a position where we can get a majority of these positions filled, it allows that new city, that new city manager to come in and to be able to work with a, a well-tuned machine as opposed to coming in and having to plug all these voids for a city that he knows, that he or she knows absolutely nothing about. So I am in support of Mr. Brown staying on. And no, he did not apply for the position, but even if we kept him on, on a six-month basis, at least to get us to a point that we can sort of, that we can get these positions filled and get the city on the right track, it'd be a smoother transition for a permanent person to come into this position.
The application process was open. No one was prevented from applying. Mr. Brown did not apply for the permanent city manager position. And if you search his name, you'll see him connected with another city. Also, there has not been a vote. I'll say that again. Three is not the majority of seven. I don't know if any other council members would like to say anything at this point. I mean, we will be having executive session discussions regarding some staffing or personnel issues tonight. But if anyone else would like to say something on the national search, please move forward. Mr. Brown is not even being considered because he didn't apply. And the application process was open to everyone and he was not prevented from applying. The applicants who went through a very rigorous process and were assessed, and we used over thirty-two thousand dollars of taxpayers' dollars to conduct this thorough search. To now say that someone who didn't go through the search should be considered and trump all of that work, I don't know if that is something that we can say is most responsible. Councilmember Martin Rogers?
Yes, and I just wanted to reiterate, we cannot talk about something that's unfair. What is unfair is that the majority of us were a part of that hiring process. Throughout the entire process, I would like to add. We talk about transparency. Thirty-four thousand dollars was put up front, not to mention what we are currently paying Mr. Brown to be in the city of East Point part-time. If you do Google his name, he comes up as being employed in another city. So where's the justification or the fairness in that? We were under the, I was under the impression that we were hiring someone full-time. And here, I have text messages from residents that are able to show me and validate that he's working in East Point part-time. So where's the fairness in that? Again, he didn't apply for the job. We are still currently waiting on things. I feel as though I am a full-time council member because we don't have leadership within the city. We don't. I've asked for items nine months ago and due to us not having leadership or proper direction in the city, I still don't have those items. My constituents are waiting. And it's just a constant ride on a hamster wheel. So no, we need to move forward with a permanent city manager so that we can get the business done for the residents that elected us to do that. And again, a small majority prevented the hiring of a permanent city manager.
Small minority.
Small minority.
So I will say the interim city manager contract is with a consulting company from whom, with whom Mr. Brown is a consultant. That contract says we are contracting for an interim full-time city manager. It does not say part-time or consultant. Councilmember Freely?
I just wanted to add, I mean, I completely respect Councilmember Butler and Councilmember Cummings' approval for Mr. Brown's performance, and I, I respect that. I just want to clarify, Mr. Brown came to us because, yes, a majority did vote when we were doing the interim process. Mr. Brown was the candidate in the interim search. But as the mayor has stated multiple times, Mr. Brown was not part of the permanent search. He was not a candidate up for consideration. So Councilmember Butler is correct. We did vote to bring him on as our interim, and that was the majority decision. However, he was never part of the consideration for our permanent city manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Yes, I'd just like to respond to something I heard earlier. I appreciate your, your candidness in bringing forth that I am a consultant. And I am working as a subcontractor for the consultant that the, the city of East Point hired. I can just tell you that I don't think this job is a part-time job. It's not being handled as a part-time job. And, you know, if, if, if there's an issue with, you know, my attendance, then we can talk about that now. Because I'm expected to be here and perform, answer calls at night on weekends, and I'm more than willing to sit down and talk to you about it. But I, I hear the word "part-time" and I, I don't think that's a, a fair representation of my attendance if that's an issue. We can talk about that now if you'd like. But in all fairness, I did not apply for the full-time job. I am not applying for the full-time job. I agreed to stay on to help you guys get to hiring a permanent person. So whatever that takes it, that's where I'm at, so I just want you guys to know that.
Yeah, I, I think what was mentioned earlier is that there is a majority of council who supports Mr. Brown continuing. So Councilmember Freely, you are correct in that when we made the decision to hire the consulting firm that brought in Mr. Brown, that decision was made by a majority-voted council. If not unanimous, I didn't look at the minutes on that. But the, there has not been a decision or vote taken around whether or not or how long Mr. Brown will continue, or a majority's vote for his continuance in that role. And Mr. Brown has just indicated he's not looking to serve in that role. The, the leader, leader of that consulting firm should be here shortly and we'll probably talk about that in executive session. All right. Can I get a motion to adopt the council agenda?
So moved.
Madam Mayor?
Yet.
I make a motion to adopt the council agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve the city council minutes from the September third regular meeting of the East Point City Council.
Madam Mayor?
It's Councilmember Shropshire?
I make a motion that we approve the city council regular meeting minutes from September the third.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the council minutes from the September ninth work session of the East Point City Council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Shropshire?
I make a motion that we approve the city council work session from September the ninth.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in any discuss- All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We are now at public hearings and our city attorney is here. Ms. Attorney Wiggins, if you can read the rules for the public hearing on the millage rate, I think it would apply to the millage rate and the alcohol license. And then when we get to the zoning item, I'll have you read the zoning public hearing rules.
Certainly, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Your public hearing rules come from Rule twenty-nine and Section two-dash-two-zero-zero-two, Rules of Council. Public hearings shall be advertised as per ordinance. Thank you. Public hearings shall be advertised as per ordinance. The presiding officer will call for a motion to open and close the hearing. Those in favor of the subject will speak first for a total of fifteen minutes. Each speaker will be limited to not more than three minutes. Those who oppose the subject will then speak for a total of fifteen minutes. Each speaker will be limited to not more than three minutes. Speakers may give a total of three minutes to another speaker after all of those present have had an opportunity to speak. Residents will be given first priority to speak. After all residents have been given an opportunity to speak, non-residents may speak. By majority vote, the council may increase the total time for each side of the subject to a total of thirty minutes per side. Each side will be given the same amount of time. Speakers must adhere to the rules of the quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing on the property tax and millage rate?
Councilmember Martin Rogers? Motion to open the public hearing on the property tax millage rate?
Councilmember Freely? It's been moved and properly seconded in any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is now open, Mr. Brown. Is finance staff here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If we can get Mr. Jackson and Shannon Golden to come up and give us an overview of the tax millage rate.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeffrey Jackson. I'm the Tax Coordinator for the city of East Point, here to present the millage rate presentation tonight. State requirement, Mrs. Fiscal Quote of Georgia, forty-eight-five-dash-thirty-two, requires each levying and recommending authority to annually publish the assessed taxable value of all property by class and in total. The proposed millage rate for the levying and recommending authorities purposes for the current calendar year and assessed taxable values and millage rates for each of the immediately preceding five calendar years. The advertisement must also indicate the percentage increase and total dollar increase for each year advertised. Official Code of Georgia, forty-eight-five-dash-thirty-two-point-one, requires each levying and recommending authority to complete a rollback millage rate. Showing now is the twenty-four-twenty-five fiscal year and the preceding five years. The real and personal that we have is two billion, two-hundred-and-ninety-five million, seven-hundred-forty-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. When we add motor vehicle of four million, fifty-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty, we add mobile homes of seventy-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-nineteen. That gives us a gross total of two billion, two-hundred-and-ninety-nine million, eight-hundred-seventy-seven-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty dollars. We have total, we have exemptions totaling one-hundred-thirty-two million, six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eight dollars, which gives us a net total of two billion, one-hundred-sixty-one, seven million, one-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-twelve dollars. With the millage rate that we're proposing at thirteen, that gives us a net taxes levied of twenty-eight million, one-hundred-seventy-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. That's an increase over last year of two million, four-hundred-and-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy dollars, a nine-point-three-five percent increase. With the rollback millage rate at twelve and our proposed of thirteen mills, that's a rollback, that's an increase- that's an increase over the rollback millage rate of 8.33%. This slide shows the actual history of the East Point millage rate, and as you can see, January 15, 16, and 17 years, we held at 15 mills. In 18, the year 2018, we reduced it to 13.89. In 19 and 20, we reduced it to 13.45. In January of, excuse me, January of 21, we reduced it also again at 13.25. And for the last two years, it has been 13, with a proposed of 13 this year. This also shows the property tax revenues from the previous years. And as you can see, we have increased it gradually each year. This slide shows a proposed home value of 400, in '23, a home valued at $400,000, with an assessed value of $158 minus the $2,000 homestead at a 13-mill. Taxes would be $254,025,400. With an 8.33% increase, that would take that same home to $433,320, within a, with the assessed value at 40%, which would make it, minus the $2,000, would make it $171,328. At the proposed millage rate of 13, that's going to take those taxes to $2,227.26. That's an increase of $173.26 a year, $14.44 per month, and 47 cents a day. The next slide shows those same values at $300. And as you, it, $300,000. The assessed values show, and then if we go to '24, you'll see that the 8.3 increase takes a $300,000 house to $324,990, with an assessed 40% value minus the $2,000, brings it to $127,996. At the 13-mill rate, that makes the taxes increased by $129.95 to $1,663.95, which is an increase of 10.83 per month and 36 cents per day. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you so much. Again, shift over. There anyone who would like to come and speak in favor of the tax, proposed tax millage rate? Please come forward at this time. There's anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak against the property tax millage rate? Come forward at this time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Anna Adams, 2187 Noonan Street in Ward B. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Jackson for calculating, presenting different millage rates this year. It is great to have these options to discuss and evaluate. That being said, I speak in opposition of the proposed millage rate of 13, and in favor of the millage rate of 12.75. 12.75 mills will support the city with the additional $1.6 million needed to support the adopted budget that was just passed. 12.75 mill is an increase of 6.25% over the rollback rate of 12 mills, but I do support that increase because the budget for fiscal year '25 has been extensively discussed, and projects and expenses have been documented and justified in 154 pages. I oppose a rate of 13 mills because today it was not presented how we arrived at the proposed number of 13 mills, why 13 mills is necessary for this fiscal year, and what exactly the money will be used for. There is always the potential for economic downturn on low tax collection rates. However, I'd expect that there is some slack built into the budget, and there are reserves to make up for some level of uncertainty and fluctuation. Something keeps puzzling me. Past discussions seem to focus a lot on what we've done with the millage rate, and I've repeatedly heard that adopted millage rates were either decreased or held constant over the past years, and not so much attention is being given on the actual dollar amounts. I don't understand why decreasing or flat millage rate is so important specifically for East Point at the expense of considering the associated dollar amount, and I'm asking for council to please explain. Even though the millage rate was held constant or decreased over the last five years, the actual property taxes increased from $16 million to about $26 million, and proposed to be for $28 million. And if you consider the last six years, net property taxes levied actually doubled, and last year alone, property taxes increased by 21%. I don't argue that money is needed for the services, and all the improvements are desperately needed. I do have concerns, though, about this one-two punch approach. First, there is an increase in property taxes through the budget, and then comes the increase in property taxes as per millage rate discussion, where we continue to stick with the millage rate and not the dollar amount as per adopted budget. And in my opinion, we are not trying hard enough to justify and quantify this decision. I'm also not yet convinced about that by throwing more money, property tax money at the problem, we are closing to quality improvements. And again, I'm in favor of 12.75 mills, and hope for the city to work on delivering the adopted budget, finish the fiscal year '23 and '24 audits, filling the interim positions and other vacancies, and fix the issues that were identified in prior audits. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Japery Hemming of 2197 Pembroke. I just want to say that our city has enjoyed a very firm financial footing for the last several years under this leadership and the previous administrations. My neighbor and I have carefully reviewed the most recently available audit reports to understand, not from our perspective, but from the experts' perspective, what is the financial health of our city. Each audit report includes a section called the General Fund Budgetary Highlights. As reported by several other cities, this section provides the budget-to-actual comparison statements that outlines the original budget, the amended budget, the actual, the actual amounts, and any variance between the final budget and the actual amounts you collected. In our audits, it gives a precise number of how much revenue we generated, what percent of our projected revenue we actually collected, and finally, what percent of our adopted budget we spent. As reported in the audits between FY 2019 and FY 22, the city, on average, generated more revenue than it spent. It has successfully captured, on average, 101.2% of the projected revenue. However, on average, for the last five years, or the last four years, we have only spent about 88.1% of the budget. So, stated differently, the city is bringing in more than it is actually spending. While this analysis that we did cannot take into account the FY 2023 budget year, because that audit report is not available, we have some confidence that you all can do something different and have an opportunity to reevaluate our millage rate before pushing our city residents to dig in our pockets to give you any more money. We're not close to financial disrepair, and we ask you not to ask for another dollar from us. Last year, you all kept the millage rate at 13, which likely resulted in additional $4.4 million in tax revenue. Given the consistent revenue capture that averages, again, 101.2 across the previous years, it's likely that our city, in fact, has recouped, again, more money than you spent. So that's roughly about $500,000 that you probably have in your co-furs, co-furs that's not yet spent. Moreover, we're still waiting on promises from that $4.4 million to be materialized. You told us that we were going to get the compensation study. We know that we're in Phase 2 of that. That was supposed to result in salary increases and promotions and other planned expenditures to boost employee morale in this city, and we're still waiting for that to be implemented. We also heard tonight and during your recent work session that there are critical vacancies across the city. However, we have $500,000 that will likely be available for you to spend now to act on those vacancies. In the FY 2025 budget, you asked us for enough money to fill 646 positions. By our best estimation, you didn't fill the 608 from last year. We probably have somewhere about 408, 484 positions that are actually filled in this city. So there are real personnel savings that can be used right now to act. We simply want you to use the money that you already have collected from us to do the work that you've already promised us. There is more money in this city than ever before, and yet, some of you have made it seem like we are operating from a deficit. And then also, we are experiencing what feels like a deficit, as evidenced by all the recent power outages and many other things that are happening. We have enough to do what we need to do, and we're asking you not to ask us to dig into our pocketbooks or wallets for any more money until you deliver 100% of the services that we've already paid and invested into this city. Please do not adopt a 13-mill millage rate.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the property tax and
Good evening. My name is Dana Rinder. I'm in Ward B. I'm at 2937 Bryant Street. And I believe our sentiments, at least my sentiments, are that we've lost a lot of faith in what's being said to us. From the power outages, to the lack of safe pedestrian corridors, we've been promised sidewalks on certain places for years now, to the lack of development for affordable housing, to losing our hospital, to the possible loss of another school that our property taxes should be helping to fund, to hearing about an eight-month vacancy for our city, for a permanent city manager where we've had $32,000 to spend, and we're not really closer to getting that. We're tired. I'm tired. I moved to the city in 2018. I bought my house because I just thought that East Point was so charming, and that there was so much potential in this city, and I'm losing faith in that. I am a resident that has the means to go where I want, but I want to stay here because there are people that can't. So I want to speak for them because they cannot. We have a lot of legacy residents that want to stay in place. This millage rate and what you're telling us, it doesn't seem that it's going to provide what we've been asking for, that community study that was done in my community and two others. In my mind, that was a great thing to do, but I don't know that anything is really going to be done about that. I don't believe it. And I, for one, am tired of seeing such a wonderful place just go downhill. We have prime real estate to the airport. It doesn't make any sense. And the last thing that I would want to see is that the city of East Point get annexed by the city of Atlanta because we have mismanaged what gym we have here. So I'm asking you all, that millage rate to increase it. If you're getting the money, I've seen that you're getting more property taxes. My property taxes go up every single year, and I pay them. If we're getting it, it needs to be allocated properly, and we want to see that progress. We want safe stores to shop at. I want to be able to call 911 when I hear a gunshot in my neighborhood and not have the phone ring forever. I think about that baby that was killed on New Year's Eve. Could there have been a faster response? We're tired, and we don't want the lip service anymore.
Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the property tax millage rate? Anyone who else would like to speak in opposition to the property tax millage rate? Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. On October the 7th-
Madam Mayor? I'd like to make a motion.
You have to have the third hearing on October 7th.
Can we discuss, can we make a motion to discuss the property taxes now, or do we have to wait until after the-
Oh, yeah, you can make a motion to discuss. Let me just say to the community that the third public hearing will be on October the 7th of this, October 7, 2024, at our council meeting. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion that we discuss the property tax millage rate.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded in any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is now open. Councilmember Butler?
Thank you. I want the residents to know, first of all, thank you for coming to speak. I really do appreciate your research because you're very thorough. What I want to say is, my family and I have been here since 1984. We've been paying property taxes since 1984. One of the things I want to add to the discussion is, 51% of your taxes go to the school board. The smallest amount of your taxes you pay goes to your municipality. I invite you to have these conversations at the school board, and I'll be right there with you. Let me give some facts to go along with that fact. The fact is Fulton County, the second-largest people that get most of your tax money, had a robust discussion over several county commission meetings, where they kept their millage rate the same, at 8.87. Still more money than we collect here in East Point. The millage rate for Fulton County schools is 17.24 mills. Ours is 13 mills. When we talk about a hospital, everybody knows I've been on the front line fighting to get our hospital back. I want you to come with me and help me with that fight. The reason why your property taxes are increasing all over the board is because of assessed values. And what we did for seven years, well, excuse me, I think it's five out of the seven, or five out of six years, we have reduced the millage rate because we wanted to try to mitigate those increases in your property taxes, because majority of us here pay property taxes too. So not only do we pay the taxes, we understand how you feel because our taxes increase too. In order to deliver those services, we have to have revenue. And if you're, everybody knows in business, you do not decrease revenue when you're increasing expenses. Some of you, because you've done thorough homework, spoke about the increase in expenses, the disparagement study, the increase in salary to keep people here. That's point two. Point three is, for the first time, we have sidewalks going from Cleveland Avenue to 285 down to Washington Road. We are doing road projects on Delo and Headland and Ben Hill, places we've never done. Our city is starting to come together where it is a walkable community, and that's where your money is going to increase those type services for you. We have a PATH project planned. We have new development coming in the buggy works and the wagon works. We have new businesses coming in here, like the brewery on R.M. Martin. This is how we attract those people to you. So I hear your reticence. I feel what you're going through because I have an increase in property taxes too. I just don't want the conversation to be one-sided without understanding all of the facts. There's, I'll close with this. There's, I'll close with this. Sandy Springs left their rates unchanged. Most people right now are planning for the rainy day that is destined to come because of economic cycles. We have been fortunate that we've had a record-high economy. But if those things should change, and they very well could change very easily, then we're trying to prevent laying off people. We're trying to prevent for a rainy day. And the fact that if we have a surplus left over in the year means that we're not being frivolous with the spending of your money. That we are being responsible. And so I hope that you receive this information because that's what it is, is information. I'm not trying to challenge your position. I'm trying to give you more information that you would be considered as to why we're considering keeping the millage rate the same. Fulton County has kept theirs the same. Sandy Spring has kept theirs the same. The school board gets more money from you than Fulton County and East Point combined. And if you want to have those conversations with them, I will be happy to go down with you and have those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for coming out and, and speaking, um, your, your thoughts. I remember I was once speaking on the same issue when they were meeting over in the city auditorium. But at that point, the millage rate was fifteen mils. And when I moved here, we had service, um, we had trash pickup twice a week. We had service. And then as it went on, they had to cut because the city wasn't getting in what it should have. So if you, your, your millage rate will remain the same, but your property taxes are going up because your home values are going up. That's assessed by Fulton County. That's not assessed by the city of East Point. East Point only applies the information that they receive from Fulton County. As far as the schools closing, yours, East Point taxes don't pay for school. You pay Fulton County School Board property tax. But here's what you can do because the school is closing. And we're going to stand and we're going to fight for Park Lane. You can join us on Thursday at the South Fulton Learning Center at forty-twenty-five Flatshows Road. That's where the school board meets. That is where you can also voice your concerns about that school closing. Because at the end of the day, that's a tax that everybody pays. It's the school board tax. Let them know how you feel about that school being closed because that's a tax that you pay. That's not the tax that you pay to the city. That's a tax that you pay to the school board. To go to that meeting on Thursday and let them know how you feel because it will affect the area over there if Park Lane closes. So I, I say this. There are things, and I'm sure that the finance department and Mr. Jackson is going to discuss because you, you talked about a comprehensive study. That's in, that's coming. You talked about sidewalks. That's coming. That's part of the T-splash. You talked about several other things that's already coming. You, we, we want safety. We've increased our police department. The numbers are up. The police department, I believe, should be fully staffed in, in, um, where they are getting, um, polices. We do have vacant positions, but guess what? You have to be competitive with those positions in salary in order to maintain good people. Also, um, there's one more thing that slipped my mind. But there are several things that the city is doing, um, that we have to maintain the level of service that we have. Um, so it'll come back to me. But, uh, we hear you. We understand. Like I say, I was there when we were meeting over in City Hall when they were increasing the millage rate to fifteen mils. We were there. But it is, it's a process. And I don't think that anybody is just misusing the money. The city is really, um, spending the money. There's capital improvement. There are a lot of things, and I think one was the power outage. That's a whole separate fund. That's enterprise fund. And, and a lot of power outages are not due to the lack, the lack that the city is doing. A lot of power outages are happening because, one, trees are falling. Uh, people are hitting the poles. Things that you can't control what happens. So the city is working on that issue and has been for quite some time with starting to put the power lines underground to help stop some of the power outage. So, um, it's a lot going on, but I, I will say this again. The school issue, that's the school board. Come, go to the meeting on Thursday at Flatshow Road in Union City so we can all stand and let them know how we feel. That's your property tax paying for the school board. Thank you.
Um, thank you to everyone who spoke during the public hearing tonight. Um, Madam Deputy City Clerk, if you could turn that mic off for me. It affects how we project. I just, never mind. Thank you, Mr. Golden. So, um, in Janu- fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, the millage rate was fifteen mils. Um, we came in and had the whole study to ensure that we, um, were no longer using a tax anticipation or payday loan to balance our budget. Um, the last, we came in in fourteen, and the previous council voted to use one for that year, but at the end of fourteen, we did not vote to continue a payday loan. Right? Um, and so then in eighteen, it went from fifteen to thirteen-point-eight-nine. What I don't have here, so I don't want to overspeak, um, is whether or not that was the rollback rate. But the number went down, right? Um, then we went in nineteen to thirteen-point-four-five. So it went down again. Not sure if it was a rollback millage rate, so I'm not going to overstate that. But for two years, we held at thirteen-point-four-five. Then went to thirteen-point-two-five. And my memory is pretty good from the recent years. We went to thirteen, but that was not the rollback millage rate, right? So although the number has decreased because we're not going back to the rollback mil- we haven't gone, we haven't approved the rollback millage rate or gone back, gone to the rollback millage rate, that is considered an increase, and we have to advertise it as such. I think effective January first, there's going to be a change in the state law that's no longer going to require that to happen. And so we'll see what next year looks like because we won't have to do that if we don't rollback rate. But nevertheless, that's where we are. I think the, the points around how we arrived at the thirteen, what staff has shared, is based upon the number in the twenty-four-twenty-five budget. Collections are not generally a hundred percent. And so if you think it's around, what, ninety? Ninety-four percent. So if we take ninety-four percent of the value at thirteen mils, it'll still be a little less than the budgeted amount of revenue from taxes. That's how staff arrived at it. I'm not saying, not taking a position either way, but that's how that number came about. Um, they've shared the rollback rate and then the middle rate of twelve-point-seven-five. Um, why is it necessary, I think is a good question that we need to ask in the last, last time, last year when we were doing the tax, property tax millage rate. I said we need to explain what we're going to use the increase in funding for. I think last year, we talked about public safety salaries, um, which was a, a, a large portion of that and some, but we were, and I think if we're going to do that, we should be able to share that with the community as to what we think that additional fund, assuming we do get a hundred percent, what it will be used for. Um, the not spending or being able to have a reserve. I mean, I think there's a financial practice that you should have about, is it six months? Of your expenses in reserve? And so there is this reserve fund balance that we have to be concerned about as well because if something catastrophic should happen, we have to be able to continue to operate, right? Um, the neighborhood study that was mentioned for River Park, Center Park, and East Washington, um, what was shared is that next steps would be sharing it with planning and zoning for our comprehensive plan. So our comprehensive plan is the plan that we approve. We're required to approve by law and update every five years. It gives our zoning district, zoning cat, uh, classification throughout the city. It also helps people understand what we're looking for in the city for different areas. So having that included there is not only for, uh, guidance for us as we develop, but also it is a public document that developers access frequently to be able to see, to see what types of project we're looking for and whether their projects might meet that. Um, also, there was mentioned that it would be, um, it was comprehensive plan, and there was another place that, um, Mr. Elias mentioned that that would be shared, um, as we look at our work. And so that's how we can embed what's in that study in different places, but then it still has to be actionable, right? And, and so, um, we hope that, um, as we move forward, there will be, um, hope will be reignited um, as, as it relates to what we're doing, as it relates to getting a permanent city manager and having the direction of the city, being under permanent leadership, and being able to move forward and move those items forward with the level of accountability from this council that trickles down to the city manager and to our direct reports. But I understand all the concerns, and again, I appreciate you all for sharing them. Um, we will have our third, um, hearing on October the seventh. Um, maybe at that, hopefully at that meeting, there will be additional information shared about how the money will be spent. Um, as well as if we can get more information about the reserve fund and where we are with those reserves because I think that would be helpful to understand as well um, for us to be able to know how many rainy days we could, um, be able to survive at this point. And so, and there is a standard as it relates to that. And so, again, thank you all for, um, coming tonight. Thank you for everyone who is, I don't know, they can't see us online anymore because of the migration over to a new system that, um, overrode our current system. And so that's why we're not on Facebook Live as we used to be. But I don't know if the link online, does that take you to a visual or just audio? Is both? Okay. Um, so thank you to everyone who is here and watching online as well. We will now move to our next public hearing. Yeah, we closed the public hearing. We were on discussion.
It's a public hearing? Oh, did we do that?
There's a motion to open the public hearing on the alcohol license for consumption on premises at Jamaican Jerk Biz. Any discussion?
So moved.
So moved, okay. It's been moved and seconded that we open the public hearing on the application for alcohol license for consumption on premises at Jamaican Jerk Biz. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Brown is there to staff overview of this item before I open it up to speakers.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, come on in, Corporal, and walk us through the alcohol license. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Corporal Jester with the Police Department. I have Ms. Ayanna Chambers. She's applying for alcohol license for consumption on premise. It's a typo here. It should be at a new business, Jamaican Jerk Biz, located at thirty-six-thirty Marketplace Boulevard. Ms. Chambers is the registered agent of a new business, Jamaican Jerk Biz, and has no history with the city of East Point. Ms. Chambers passed a background process adhered to advertisement requirements and obey all bylaws required, required as a new applicant. The Police Department recommends the issuing of alcohol license for consumption on premises of beer, wine, and liquor.
Thank you so much. Um, City Attorney, um, Corporal just mentioned that it is a new business. I'm not sure if that's material enough. The motion was for the name of the business. Do we need to? I don't know how, do we need to amend the item to say new versus existing? I don't think, I don't know if that's material enough.
I don't think it is.
Okay, I just want to make sure before we proceed with the public hearing, as indicated. And for the record, it is for on-premises, uh, alcohol license for consumption on premises of new business, Jamaican Jerk Biz. Thank you, Corporal. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward at this time. The applicant can come forward at this time.
And Madam Mayor, I was just going to say that the business may be open, so it is possibly an existing business. This may be a new application.
Okay.
I'm hired. I don't know what to say, so. But I'm Ayanna Chambers, the owner of Jamaican Jerk Biz in East Point. And, um, I thought it was necessary for me to have the liquor license due to competition. We're losing a lot of business because we don't have it.
How long have you been open?
Hmm, three months, almost three months.
So it is existing.
But it's like a revolving door. Once they come in, if they don't see we have liquor, they just leave. Because we're right there in the area where there's so much other restaurants that have it.
Okay.
So pretty much that's it, but.
Thank you for being here this evening.
So it's definitely needed for us to stay open. Yeah.
Thank you for choosing East Point. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing?
I second it.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, make the motion that we open the floor for discussion and possible action regarding the granting of an alcohol license for Jamaican Jerk Biz.
So moved, Councilmember Martin Rogers.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is open. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. Um, may I have the applicant back, please?
Yes?
Yes, ma'am. Your business is located right there off of Camp Creek, correct?
Yes, Camp Creek, Clarkway.
Yes, ma'am, and I see you're doing some extensive renovation now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we really do appreciate you investing in East Point, and I've seen the work that you've put into that property.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin Rogers, you want to make the motion to approve?
Yes. Um, I'd like to make the motion to approve the alcohol license for consumption on premises of an existing business, the Jamaican Jerk Biz, located at thirty-six-thirty Marketplace Boulevard.
Councilmember Butler.
Suite eight-twenty.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Next up is, um, Madam City Attorney. I need you to read the zoning public hearing room.
Certainly. It's found in section ten-dash-twenty-two-nineteen of the zoning code. Before adopting any change to the zoning maps or text of the zoning ordinance, the city shall hold a public hearing following the public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission, where a recommendation was made on the petition. Public hearings before the city council shall be conducted as follows. The presiding officer will call for a motion to open and close the hearing. The presiding officer or his or her designee will introduce the proposed zoning amendment before the city council. Staff will then be called upon to present the planning, the planning commission's recommendation and summarize the staff's written report. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed amendment will then be provided an opportunity to address the council. The applicant for the proposed amendment or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal, for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning amendment will then be permitted to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. By majority vote of the council, by majority vote, the council may increase the total time for speakers provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for a side, the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his allotted The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify himself or herself and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning decision under consideration, shall address remarks only to the council, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The presiding officer may refuse the speaker the right to continue if after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of decorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing on item number seven?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Shropshire.
So moved.
Oh, Councilmember Freely. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Brown is there to open the presentation?
Yes, Madam Mayor. If we can get Ms. Smith and Mr. Kelly give us a presentation on this rezoning application.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow counsel. Kimberly Smith, Planning and Community Development Director. In reference to this case, number P2024RZ-001-07, properties located at 2380 Delo Drive. The applicant is ANDP Delo Village LLC. And the property is currently zone R3. The rezoning request is to rezone the property from R3, which is our multifamily zoning district, to mixed use with a concurrent variance to remove the mixed use requirements for multiple uses. I stated previously, the zoning of the property is currently R3, which is our multifamily residential district. The future land use map designation is Neighborhood Center. Some of the characteristics of the Neighborhood Center area and some of the goals is to encourage adaptive reuse of existing building stock when appropriate, one directly next to new commercial and retail tenants to locate on vacant or underutilized properties whenever possible. Some of the goals are to restore traditional pedestrian scale and character of these sites. And the vision and some, and part of the vision is to provide for a variety of activities such as general retail services, commercial, professional office, high-density housing, and some public and open space. The typical zoning district for the neighborhood commercial area is our educational institutional R3, C1, mixed use, and CR. And the residential use and scale according to the comp plan is six to eight dwelling units per acre. The next slide is a site plan rendering of the proposed 96 new apartment homes to be located. The proposed amenities for this project are a clubhouse, a art room, a fitness center, arts and craft room, a youth community center, onsite laundry, offices, a computer room, a playground with benches, a garden, enhanced landscape areas, an outdoor gazebo with a grill area and seating, a dog park, and a walking trail, and bike racks. These are renderings of the proposed project. These are additional renderings and facades. And lastly, the Planning Commission recommended approval of case number P2024RZ-007-07. Rezone the properties located at 2380 Delo Drive from R3 multifamily residential to mixed use district with the following conditions. The first condition, applicant must only build a maximum of the proposed 96 apartment units. Condition number two, ensure that the building elevates, vary in style and design composed of brick and cementious building materials as depicted in the work session presentation on August 8th. City of East Point Planning and Community Development will maintain architectural oversight of development. That's condition number three. Condition number four, applicant shall provide an enhanced lighting and landscape plan. Condition number five, applicant shall provide a listing of amenities to be notated on a proposed site plan. Condition number six, applicant shall provide a summary of community benefits components in relation to the housing displacement and replacement policies as outlined by their team at the August 8th, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session Meeting. The concurrent variance request was also recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and is to eliminate the non-residential uses as specified within the mixed use zoning district. And this will aid with the ability to provide the City of East Point with affordable housing as proposed. That's the conclusion of our presentation.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the rezoning and concurrent variance
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Harold Buckley, 2849 Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. If you will give me a moment, I'd like to pull up a PowerPoint presentation that I've So the staff did a very good job summarizing and presenting the nature of our proposal and the technical aspects of it. So what I'd like to do is to just supplement the information that they have given you already. First, the Atlanta Neighborhood Development Partnership owns this property, which is currently developed with a 64-unit affordable housing apartment development. You can see that in the aerial image there. That is the Delo Village Apartments. That is our site. You can see that there are several buildings, roughly 12 of them, across the site, which is a little less than four and a half acres. ANDP is a nonprofit organization that develops finances and advocates for affordable housing at scale to promote racial equity and healthy communities where families thrive. And they do this through three primary areas. The first focus area is housing development, which is what we're talking about tonight. The second area is policy and community engagement. And then the third is capital for community development. So that's affordable and mixed income housing in a loan program, housing loan program. The policy and community engagement provides residents with tools to actually take a leadership role in improving their own communities. It's geared toward empowerment and agency. Since ANDP started in 1991, it has developed more than 11,000 housing units and it has administered numerous community building initiatives. So this is a truly mission-driven redevelopment proposal where we're talking about replacing the existing development with a new 96-unit affordable housing development. I wanted to share this aerial because it shows a couple of things. Number one, you see the intersection of Hedlin and Delo. Between us and that intersection are two commercial properties. One is a food store, the other is a gas station. And then you have the two very large shopping centers on the south side of that development at the southeast corner. That's the Wayfield Foods Shopping Center. And then you have a smaller shopping center on the west side, southwest side of that with the big attic as the big anchor in that shopping center. When we were here last, there was, there was a little discussion about access to public transit. So I put in the orange and the red lines to show you that this site is served by the intersection of two MARTA lines. You have the Route 84, which runs north and south between the East Point MARTA Station and the West End MARTA Station. And you also have the Route 93 bus, which goes east-west between the College Park MARTA Station through East Point over to Greenbrier. And in between, it provides direct service to downtown East Point and downtown College Park. So even though we're not talking about, you know, the stereotypical transit-oriented development that you think of that's built on a MARTA parking lot, it does have access not only to easily accessible community-scale neighborhood services, but also to fairly robust transit services. Now, to avoid burying the lead, we did have conversation at the work session about two misinformation campaigns that we found out were happening on the property, people going door-to-door to our residents. I wanted to give you an update on that at the top of my presentation. We did take that first step of making the city and anyone who was listening to that last meeting aware that that was happening and that the information that was being distributed was false. We followed that up with written notice to the residents last week and it culminated in an in-person onsite meeting just this afternoon at 4:30. To our pleasant surprise, that meeting was fairly well-attended. There were about 40 residents who attended that meeting on the site this afternoon. And just like you, you know, a lot of their questions were about, well, you know, what do I have a right to expect? You know, will I be able to come back? What happens in the meantime? And as we shared with you last week, we explained to them that everyone who is on the property now, living in one of those units, will have the opportunity to come right back and occupy a unit in the newly redeveloped development. They just need to, you know, put their name on a registry to indicate their interest. And so then that is the way that will work. And then we made them aware of the fact that ANDP's partner in this redevelopment, Laurel Street Residential, is handling all aspects, excuse me, of moving that residents have to do to make way for this redevelopment activity. And that includes hiring and paying for movers, coordinating resident relocation, finding temporary housing nearby for existing residents, supplying all necessary packing materials that residents need to move for that temporary move, and covering the cost of transferring their utilities. So again, we had a very good conversation this afternoon and we think that we have, you know, done an effective job of rebutting that misinformation that was, that was being spread. If, we can just hit that. This is an image from the front of the development. So you can see that, you know, those buildings that I described, the 12 buildings across the site, those are two-story buildings that are roughly 60 years old. I mean, the development is very well-maintained, but obsolescence is obsolescence. You know, people's living standards today are not the same as they were 60 years ago. And so we really want to upgrade this property to meet the modern needs of a household. This is a view from inside the development in the middle. You can see to the right of that is the small playground that is there now. In the, in the site plan, you can see the playground that will replace it, which is in the left sort of community green, I will describe that as. So instead of having 12 two-story buildings scattered across the site, we're going to consolidate that into two, three-story buildings that are focused more on the interior of the property. One of the things that will do is pull those buildings away from the perimeter of the site for most of our boundary. That really doesn't matter because looking at it the way it is now, to the right of that site plan is commercial development. To the rear of it is the industrial East Point Water Works. And then sort of to the rear and left, upper-left, is a nature preserve. So our only residential neighbors are directly to the left of this image. There are houses that are next to us and back up to us. Pulling that, those, the buildings away from the perimeter of the site is going to allow more privacy for our residential neighbors. So we think that, you know, in addition to improving the experience our residents have on the site, that will provide our neighbors with a greater measure of privacy as well. And then finally, we talked about amenities and staff touched on this in their presentation. The amenity package that we're proposing includes a fitness center, the outdoor playground that we talked about, the pedestrian trail amenity that the planning staff mentioned. In that right community green, you'll have a gazebo with grills and seating areas. There's a dog park that we're putting in. We'll have arts and craft spaces as well as youth community space. And we will also have shared and individual laundry amenities. So you have the shared amenities that anyone who lives in the property can take advantage of. And then we'll also have connections in the units so that, you know, there's an opportunity for washer-dryers in the units as well. And what I did not put up there and I should have was the computer lab. And we also are providing Wi-Fi access. So with all of that, I will stop talking and allow you an opportunity to ask me questions if there are any, and I'd like to reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the rezoning and concurrent variance request? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the rezoning of property located at 2380 Delo Drive from R3 multifamily residential district to MIX mixed-use district with concurrent variances to construct 96 new affordable multifamily units? Anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Can I get a motion to close? Oh, you reserved time for rebuttal. Okay, I did remember. The applicant does not wish to provide any rebuttal comments at this time. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Shropshire. Motion to waive the first reading.
Motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. A motion to approve and adopt an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of East Point by rezoning properties located at 2380 Delo Drive from R3 multifamily residential district to MIX mixed-use district with concurrent variance. Councilmember Shropshire?
So moved.
Councilmember Freely?
With the conditions.
Yes, the conditions and the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, we have a total of eleven.
Okay. Chapter 2, Section 2-2002 BB Rule 28. The public may speak during the public comment section of the agenda. Speakers must complete a comment form prior to the start of the meeting. Subject may include any subject of choice. There will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker. Speakers that have signed up to speak may give all or part of their time, up to three minutes, to another speaker for a total of six minutes of speaking time. Speakers may address the council only once during this time of the agenda. Speakers must identify themselves and their address prior to speaking. Questions from the speakers may not be addressed during the public speaking section of the agenda. East Point residents will have priority over other speakers. There will be a total of not more than 60 minutes for the public speaking section of the agenda. Speakers may only address the presiding officer. Speakers shall observe all rules of decorum. No debate, disrespect, or obscenity shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the foregoing. You may call the first speaker, Madam Deputy City Clerk.
First speaker, we have Dr. Lauren Morrit.
Excuse me, hold on just a moment. Don't start a time yet. Press the button, right, yep. I should have said the button on the mic.
I'm so new.
No worries. If I had said the button on the mic, that would have been a better.
Hello.
This is my first time commenting in such a forum. I have not prepared anything formally, but wanted to take advantage of being a citizen, using my voice in this forum rather than clicking likes on social media. I'm excited to be here in the building today, in E.P. as a resident and as a proud public school teacher here in East Point. There are a few things I'd like for you to consider, or at least know others in the community are thinking about. I think you know all these things already, but I want to say them anyway in front of First, I want to thank you for the service. I don't know if your work pays you anything, but I know that I work another full-time job, I'm assuming you do too, and this is a long day. Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate you. Speaking of service, I want to shout out to the East Point Police and Fire Department as well as the power crews. Thank you all for your service. I've worked in large systems, mostly educational, for a long time. I know that structure must be in place and the right people in the seats on your bus to get us where we want to go. With a vacant or temporary city manager, I know we're not getting to our destination in efficient manner. I heard all the report earlier today. I just want to ask that we take care of this business sooner than later. If you don't care for the candidates, please open your search again. The millage rate, again, these are things that I don't know a ton about. I just moved to the city in twenty-one, but I'd... Reports about, there are reports about having additional funds from last year. I definitely love the idea of a rainy day fund and having money in case of an emergency with the millage rate staying the same or increasing. What does that mean for services in the city? I'd like to see the surplus of money from property taxes match a surplus of services in the city. Please add sidewalks. I see my students and my neighbors dangerously traveling to get to work or school or the grocery store, and it is hard on my heart. Please give us sidewalks. If fifty percent of our taxes go to schools, and I'm in the schools every day, I see that we need some more support. I'm not sure what's happening with that money or how it's being spent. I'll be at that meeting on Thursday. I don't want to see Park Lane closed. Is there anything that we can do as residents to help keep the power from going out? What does that mean? Do we need to be trimming trees more? I'd love to know what I could do to help and be supportive regarding the loss of power. I'd like to also take a look at... Is that my time? Okay, I was going to address the lack of business, but I just want to thank you and say, come on down and see... Way to go, someone talked about more public artworks. I'm the art teacher, one of the two art teachers. I run the visual arts program at Tri-Cities. Come see me sometime. Thank you.
I have to be fair.
Yeah, very much. Thank you so much.
No, I appreciate you coming, though. Please come back.
Appreciate it.
Our next speaker.
Next, we have Barbara Boyce.
My name is Barbara Boyce. I live at thirteen fifty-six St. Michael Avenue, East Point in Colonial Hills. I was here last month complaining about the interests and the exits that come into East Point and go out of East Point. They need to be paid. Also, I was complaining about the limbs that are falling into the street on my street. It's seven trees that need to be cut back. They did, what you all did was, the guy did come out and cut the limbs off the street line. But now, I need for someone to come and cut the limbs back. So since you all have extra money, hopefully you all can do that, and my street need paving because we have those rocks from the nineteen forties, and the streets in desperate need are being repaved and looking decent, that people do live on that street. So those are my problems that I have with East Point. Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Eddie Lee Brewster.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Eddie Lee Brewster, eighteen forty-seven Stanton Road. I'm here on behalf of FACA, Fulton County Community Action Authority, and we have something we want to give away. As you know, the lackey season is about to end, but we recently, the state awarded us more money, so we got some more time for people to apply for energy assistance. And I'm encouraging all East Point residents on tomorrow, I know this is a short note, but tomorrow, you can come and apply for five hundred dollars to pay your energy bill at ten Hill Street at the Martin Luther King Aquatic Center, tomorrow from nine to three. What you must do, you must have your I.D., your proof of income, and your bill that shows your account number and name on it. These documents must be copied, you can't have anything on your phone. We're going to see a hundred and fifty people tomorrow. I'm encouraging everybody in East Point, please, if you qualify, and qualifying is various... I'll just give you the number for the qualifying. If you are a single individual, you make thirty thousand dollars. Two people, thirty-eight thousand. Up to six people, seventy-five thousand in your household. Come and take advantage of this. This is your money, this is taxpayer money that's coming back to you, so please come and apply for this money to help pay your energy bill. Thank you.
Next, we have Kevin Brown.
Mayor and council? Good evening. Kevin Brown, seventeen sixty-nine Linwood Avenue, Ward A. I'm here tonight to talk about our neighborhood in general. We have had disobedience of stop signs, stop signals, and speed limits. My street is very short between two stop signs, even the school bus comes flying up the street. The stop signs over off of Neely, I have been walking my dog, and on several occasions, the police officers don't even slow down. So we need to look at that as well. The other thing that we have from my point is we have a lack of inconsistent updates on the commons, the historical block, which includes the library, the existing library, which has been closed, and now school is open, and kids have nowhere to go to get their resources, as well as a general overall update in the downtown district, including White Way and the redirecting of all of the traffic in that area. The other thing in our neighborhood, if you're on our side of town, you'll notice last week that there was this very strong sewer odor. That is the property that's now labeled for tiny homes in the area between Linwood and Neely. The city's been addressing that sewer smell. They fixed it first by putting what smelled like urinal cakes in the water, and the entire neighborhood felt like you were standing next to portaions while you were walking around. It's disgusting. Tonight, while I was out walking my dog, I thought maybe that had been mitigated. However, once I got around the corner of West Cleveland, right out this street right here, you could smell it again. There are four issues tonight for consent, for sewer repairs, obviously the infrastructure here needs to be addressed. And lastly, I'd just like to say that tomorrow is National Voter Registration Day, so please, everybody, get out, register, and vote. Thank you.
Next, we have Jermaine Wright.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jermaine Wright, and I live at one thousand two Bay Road Circle, East Point, Georgia, villages of East Point. So I stand before you with a crucial matter that affects the heart of our community, and that's the proposed closure of Park Lane Elementary School. So Park Lane Elementary is more than just a school, it's a historic landmark in our city with a rich history of dedication towards excellence. So established in nineteen fifty-six, Park Lane Elementary has been a beacon of learning and a pillar of support for generations of students and their families. And over the decades, it has grown to become one of the last remaining community-sized schools in our area, serving as a nurturing environment where students thrive academically and socially. What sets Park Lane apart is its outstanding support for special needs. It is renowned being the preferred school for children with autism, offering specialized programs that cater to their unique needs. This dedication to creating and accommodating and supporting learning environment is not something easily found or something that we are looking to replace. So this issue is personally deeply personal to me, as this is a school that I have shown up for in recent years, most recently being the restructuring of the playground at that school for the safety of our children. So I am one who's recently engaged, and my fiance's son, who will be my son, is a child with autism, so those services are especially important to me at Park Lane School. So for us, Park Lane Elementary isn't just a school, it represents support and a community that understands the needs that Leo, that's his name, that Leo will need. So however, we face a significant threat to this chair's institution. Superintendent Dr. Looney has proposed a closing Park Lane Elementary due to new enrollment standards. Such a decision will not only dismantle a historic institution, but also disrupt the lives of countless families who depend on Park Lane for its exceptional support and sense of community. So the voting on this proposal is set to take place in February of twenty twenty-five, and until then, we must take action. And the way we do that is by emailing Dr. Looney and the Fulton County School Board and attending the community meeting on Thursdays and spreading the word. So I'm asking that we all come together and support Park Lane because we cannot afford to have this school closing. Thank you.
Next, we have Ann Adams.
Good evening, Ann Adams, two one eight seven Neuman Street. First, thank you very much for your responses to the millage rate comments. I have a few more other comments. A while back, council had started discussing homestead exemption in general before other topics took over. My takeaway from that discussion was that it is actually quite involved process and more involved than it appears. So my question is, what are all the critical milestones and deadlines if council were to make changes to the homestead exemption? So I'm just in general asking where to go to to get clarity on the process and the timeline. The second also related to homestead, and that is the Georgia House Bill five eighty-one that was passed this year. I don't know if there is a plan to educate East Pointers on what that bill actually means for us. I tried to read it, but I get lost in the details, the language. Also, but I do understand that, if I understand correctly, local governments can opt out of that by March first after holding three public hearings, and so my question is what council stands is on that topic. Third, regarding departmental vacancies, I would like to thank Dr. Martin Rogers for pursuing this topic, and I hope that there are some more specific numbers and plans and updates that will be shared with the public as well. And then for my final comment, I wish the council good luck in working on figuring out the permanent city manager. I like the interim manager Brown very much, but if he has not applied, I hope that we can move quickly forward to find a good candidate, and I wish the council best of luck because we need a permanent city manager and we need, as a prerequisite, fulfilling the other leadership positions. Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Japarae Hemming, and she was given time by Atrenda Castle.
Good evening again, I'm Japarae Hemming. I try to follow the conversations about money and leadership, and so I do have a few additional comments about the money and also a few about leadership. I appreciate Ms. Shropshire and Madam Mayor for your comments in response to my concerns about the millage rate. I just want to remind you that I extensively studied the general fund during the budget review process in the spring. Only thirteen percent of the general fund money is actually being transferred out to the capital fund projects, and when we talk about the sidewalks and the roads and all of those things, thirteen percent of the general fund money is going there. Also, I just wanted to state that Ms. Shropshire, Councilmember Shropshire appropriately pointed out that the electricity comes out of the enterprise fund. So again, just a reminder, the general funds are funded by our taxes, and so I'm not asking you to reduce money that's going to those other projects like capital projects and enterprise. I'm asking you to reduce the money that's coming out of our taxes and funding the general fund. Also, if you look at the audit reports for the last several years, you will see that many of the capital projects have not been completed. In that statement, there's a very clear statement that talks about how the money was not spent. It's often not spent on personnel, and it's often not spent on the projects. So again, I say to you, regardless of a conversation about reserve funds or vacancies, we're not doing the projects, and so I'm not sure why you then need money if you're not completing the projects that have already been slated. Onto my quick second topic of leadership. The conversation earlier today, and I listened to the conversation at the work session, and I was frankly very disappointed. I don't understand what's happening with the inaction of hiring a city manager. Dr. Martin Rogers, Mr. Freedley, and the mayor were really clear about the impasse that we're at, and I'd like to know why we spent several months and thirty-two thousand dollars not to make a decision. It doesn't quite make sense to me, especially because the confidence in this developmental associates to find the next interim manager, or excuse me, to find the next permanent manager was clear. We can't move forward in our city without a city manager. It's impossible for the city to get work done. Also, thank you, Dr. Martin Rogers, for calling to task the interim city manager to bring forth that vacancy report. We hope to see it, but your comments suggested that it was troubling and maybe a little bit scary. By my neighbor and our best estimation, there are nineteen leadership vacancies in critical departments. We are missing, obviously, a city councilperson member, and I look forward to the outcome of the new election. We're missing folks in the city attorney's office, the city clerk's office. It goes on and on and on like this. In finance, we don't have a director, a budget manager, a grant manager, a grant coordinator. In customer care, we don't have a director or a deputy. We're missing leadership in contracts and procurement. We don't have an I.T. director, and this is especially troublesome, given the recent I.T. gate where we lost almost a million dollars to some sort of cyber security heist. I'm not going to read all these notes because I think what I'm trying to really articulate is, we don't have the leadership in the city to move things forward, and yet you continue to ask us for more, and that just doesn't, that doesn't compute or make sense to me. I hear all the things you're saying about the Fulton County taxes, they overtax us too, so it doesn't make sense then to double down and continue to tax us. So I just want to be clear, we can celebrate the things that have been done, and we can also ask you for better. And we have genuinely been asking for better for several months now, years now, I'm not going to say months, for years, and we're not seeing it. And then I lastly just want to say, you ran, many of the new council members ran on a platform of change and progress, and so to hear that people are being obstacles in the way of change and progress is so disheartening. I mean, truly disheartening. I ask you to get laser-focused on the tasks at hand, represent us well, do the work of appointing the leadership, and work together. The political allegiances that we hear about and all that, it's not worth it to us because it's not doing us any service. So I really, really ask you to get very clear about the increase or about maintaining that thirteen millage rate and what it does to us, and I ask you to get very clear that if Mr. Brown doesn't want the job, then we need to hire the people that do want the job and who are going to be here for the long haul. We deserve better, we're asking you for better, we hired you and elected you because you promised that you would give us better. So please, give us better.
Next, we have Bernal Edgcombe. Next, we have Bernal Edgcombe. Elaine Frazier. Dana Rinder.
Thank you all again. Just a quick comment from me, I appreciate your work. I do believe that we need to have a shorter meeting so that we can have more participation from our community. Admittedly, a lot of times I'm not off from work by the time these meetings start, so I'll follow up later on, but three hours is a little bit too long for people to be doing this, but I appreciate your time, and I'm looking forward to the changes that everyone's talking about making. Thank you.
Not sure how to pronounce his name, but last name Rogers. There are no more public comments.
Thank you to everyone who spoke this evening. We will now move to our consent agenda items. Get a, get a motion to approve consent agenda items eight through twenty.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember.
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items eight through twenty.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. First agenda item is, this was an item from electric that came up after the meeting. Can I get a motion to open this floor for discussion and possible action to allow MEAG to allocate excess capacity for sale to deficient participants? It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Brown, I see Mr. Magnum.
Yes, yes, come on up times, please.
Good evening, Madam Council. Staff is requesting council discussion, possible action to allow MEAG to allocate excess capacity for sale to deficit participants. Allocation will serve as a supplemental capacity at a rate of sixty-one, sixty-one dollars and forty-nine cents KW through year end, addition to hourly energy market prices. Staff recommends MEAG to allocate the excess capacity.
How much excess, excess capacity do we have?
Currently, we, my apologies, currently we have access of two-point-seven-one-three, two-point-seven megawatts. We have, I'm sorry, we have nineteen point seven in reserve, but we're required to keep fifteen percent in reserve.
I was just about to say, what if we get another development? So we have nineteen in reserve?
Right now, we have a total of nineteen point seven in reserve, yes, ma'am.
So that's, and the two-point-seven is over that nineteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I see any council member.
What is the threat of us having a shortage if we sell this surplus off?
If we were to get, it's, it's a very slim chance unless we get like a data center coming in that would take up the majority of that, and then we'll probably have to go into the market, reach out to MEAG and ECG and go into open market to purchase energy.
How long are we, or do you propose we sell this excess?
It's, right now, it'd be for, for, for the next year. So next year, we'll go back out and MEAG will reach back out to us and request, what do we want to do with our excess load if we have excess load next year?
Okay, so this is only for one year?
Yes, each year we have to come back and, and they'll send us requests, we'll go over it, and they'll let us know how much we have.
And how much earnings do you think we would get from selling this extra?
I don't have the data for that, I don't have the information.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Freedley.
Just a quick question, is this sort of a typical request or is this an unusual?
This is a typical request, you know, each point has always been longer in power, so this is for us to, if we don't, if we don't do anything, we get nothing for it, so they just sit there, we just lose money for it. So the best thing for us to do is at least get something for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think MEAG is coming back in November, if I'm not mistaken, on our integrated resource plan, because this is the first time in a historical long time where we are not very long on power. I mean, at one point, we were, say we had a hundred, we were only using eighty, so it sounds like we're in a good position, but we need to talk about what our additional load would be, given the commitment in equitable growth and inclusion strategic plan that a hundred percent of our additional load would be renewable. And I think when Stuart and Steve were here last week, they talked about coming back to us in November about what energy options are available so that we can get additional load, but in a way that get additional renewable energy load, so I look forward to them. I think we said November.
Yes, ma'am, they returned it in November.
Okay. No further discussion, can we get a motion to allow MEAG to allocate excess capacity for sale to deficient participants? This allocation will serve as supplemental capacity at a rate of sixty-one point forty-nine, sixty-one dollars, forty-nine cent per kilowatt per year. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the discussion of possible action on digitization of documents stored in the warehouse for various city departments by Xerox Corporation in the amount of forty-five thousand, three-hundred-ninety-one dollars and sixty cents. Phase two, CIP funded phase two. Yeah, I don't understand that part. Can we get a motion open discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Brown, I see Mr. Lawrence.
Yes, Mr. Lawrence, if you can take us through item number twenty-two.
Good evening, Madam Council. This was the digitalization of the documents for the entire city, which included several departments, from HR to planning, community development, different plans, things, rules and regulations of documents that could not be shredded and had to be digitalized. So the first phase was approved in April of last year. Xerox is now ready to move on to the second phase, which is the final phase, and that's what I'm here to get approval for.
Do we know how long the second phase is going to be?
So it is supposed to be up to six to eight months. Because of the, we had to, the first phase, Madam Mayor, they had to make sure that it was compatible with our current system, which is contract works, and so once we found that out, now that we're moving to the second phase, they said it was going to be a lot faster, but there were documents that had to be like put aside, whereas the other documents are just being sent back to us.
All right, can we get a motion to approve item number twenty-two? It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item number twenty-three. Motion, can we get a motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, the floor is open, Mr. Brown, I see Mr. Golden.
Yeah, Mr. Golden, item number twenty-three, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. With this item, this item addresses the findings that we had in previous audits regarding the fixed assets. So we've selected a vendor that will comply with the city reporting requirements and maintain accountability and control of city assets. So they will assist with a comprehensive citywide fixed asset inventory for the city and identify those assets, then provide a comprehensive, accurate fixed asset inventory so that we may be able to report these requirements and maintain accountability and control of city assets.
Can I get a motion to approve item number twenty-three?
Second.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item number twenty-four, motion to open the floor for discussion of possible action. Your mic's not on.
Council discussion and possible, and possible action on single-source vendor Evergreen Solution LLC for phase-two classification and composition study, not exceed thirty-eight thousand dollars.
There's a second.
Second.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, the floor is now open, Mr. Brown, this is human resources, I'm assuming this is coming from Ms. Jessie.
Yeah, Ms. Jessie, item number twenty-four, please.
Madam Mayor and members of council, this is phase two of the pay and classification study. You all generously approved in phase one, the increase in our beginning hourly rate for twenty dollars an hour. Phase two will take a look, using the same process that they used initially, to look at all of the other positions in the city. Those would be positions that the city currently uses. We have a number of positions on our pay plan, but not all of those positions are filled. Some of them have just been there for several years as different needs arise, but they are not currently assigned to a specific department. So Evergreen Solutions will charge us the same amount that they charged for phase one, and that is thirty-eight thousand dollars. They, we've started to send them some of the data, same types of data that we sent in phase one, and upon approval of this, we can start with a calendar of the meetings and the employee sessions that are necessary to move this forward.
I don't see any lights, can we get a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, that we approve item twenty-four, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, we're at council comments, comments from council. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, September is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and prostate cancer is the most common type of cancer diagnosed in men in the United States. Furthermore, it's the second leading cause of cancer death in men after lung cancer in the United States. So inviting everybody to join myself, Councilmember Butler, the Vi-Cappa-Cappa Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi in the City of East Point on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from nine AM to one o'clock PM, for our Community Prostate Cancer Awareness Health Fair. It's going to be here outside in front of City Hall. We'll have a panel discussion on actual prostate cancer survivors, our loved ones who support or have support men with prostate cancer, prostate cancer cutting-edge medicine, devices and agencies, prostate cancer awareness, signs, checkups, treatment and resources. We have vendors that'll be there as well, from Georgia Girology, Zero Prostate Cancer, City of Hope, author David Moffett, who is the author of Courage and Strength, CGE blends, CJE blends, Boston Scientific and Enrich Therapy Groups. Again, we're asking everyone to come out and take advantage of the PSA testing, men, we're inviting all men and family members as well to come out and take advantage of the City of East Point's Prostate Cancer Awareness Health Fair. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings, I don't recall a motion being approved by council for that event, are you trying to make a motion tonight?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
It's been moved improperly, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, I actually have two announcements for tonight, and one is pertaining to Our Votes Matter. It is going to be a Women's March on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, down in Selma, Alabama. You can find more information at twenty, the number twenty, MillionWomenStrong.org. And there is an upcoming Family Fall Festival at Chapel Hill Church, which is going to be held on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, from six-thirty to eight-thirty PM. The location to the church is forty-three-thirty Washington Road in East Point, Georgia, three-zero-three four four. Hope to see you all there. Oh, wait a minute, additionally, the best Wednesday night of the year is our Fall Family Festival on Wednesday, October twenty-third, from six-thirty to eight-thirty PM. We will be celebrating the season together with food trucks, with food for purchase, a petting zoo, inflatables, a carnival, games and more. This is our biggest event of the fall, and we are anticipating many guests, more families and much fun. Thank you.
Councilmember Shropshire.
Thank you. Thank you to all the residents who came out and spoke, we heard you, and thank you for taking your time to come out. Let me say this, the reason why I mentioned the power, the electric, the enterprise fund, because the conversation came up in reference to the power outage. So I wanted everybody to understand that there is a separation in funds. Yes, we are fully aware, what is taxpayers' dollars, which is the general fund, but when you mention power outage and what possibly can make, can do better, that's a separate fund, which is called the enterprise fund. So I just wanted to clear that up. On October to, October the fifth, there will be a voter registration right here at City Hall, and there will also be a kid-friendly zone as well as other things that will be taking place to go along with that. We do want everybody to register to vote if you have not voted, if you are not registered to vote, and if you need to update your address, now is the time to do it. We're in a critical, critical election right now, and we need everyone to make sure that they are registered to vote. If you don't know your polling place, you can go to the Secretary of State's website to find out where you are to go vote, but we do need everyone registered to vote, and we need everyone to go vote, so make sure that you have those things in place. I'm not su, I think early voting starts like on October the seventh? October the fifteenth? But registration ends on October the seventh. So we want to make sure that we get everybody registered to vote and make sure that your address is up to date and you know your polling place to vote. So I will say that, but look for the flyer to come out in reference to the voter registration on October the fifth, right here at City Hall. Thank you.
Hispanic Heritage Month started on yesterday and September fifteenth, and will go through October the fifteenth, and so this is our time to celebrate the many valuable contributions of our Hispanic residents, not only in the City of East Point, but across the country and the impact that they have made on our country, and so I encourage you all to celebrate this year. I'm trying to find the theme for this year. Let's see. I don't see it on their page, but please, celebrate the contributions of Hispanic heritage during this time period, September fifteenth, October fifteenth. Also, oh, I closed my laptop. I wanted to make an announcement that on September the sixth of this year, Senators Ossoff and Warnock announced over thirty-seven million dollar in bipartisan infrastructure law funding for safer streets, and of that, the City of East Point received a four-hundred-thousand dollar grant to develop a comprehensive safety action plan. So thank you to our senators, Senators Ossoff. So, thank you to our senators, Senators Ossoff and Warnock for their consistent and persistent support of us through their presence, but also in ensuring that we have funding to help ensure that we are serving the residents of East Point and impacting the residents now and for generations to come. I will say that we had our Healthy Point Celebration Dinner with the top incentive earners on recently. And during that dinner and discussion, there's a desire that we have more activities and we've been talking about doing more. I meant to look at the date, but some time ago, council approved the Healthy Point. It's been a year-round initiative. And so, we are looking to kick off the Healthy Point Mind, Body and Soul Full Circuit Saturday, where we will have a number of different activities so people can have an opportunity to do yoga, Pilates, aerobics, have mental health sessions, strength training, even also having some health resources as well as lunch and line dancing with our seniors and maybe even art components. So, we are in the process of developing that. And I would like to, in abundance of caution, again, the Healthy Point is a year-round initiative, but I would like to have a motion from council to approve the Healthy Point use of city facilities for Circuit Saturdays.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion?
Discussion. Yes, ma'am. I just have one question. How many Saturdays do you need?
We haven't decided yet whether it's gonna be monthly, bi-monthly or quarterly, but I can't remember the date, I meant to pull it. Council has already approved the Healthy Point as a year-round initiative with the goal of providing more frequent activities in addition to the ninety-day health initiative. But just in abundance of caution, I'm making this specific, asking for this specific motion.
Would it be at the, I'm sorry if I missed it. Are you gonna have it at Jefferson Park?
We're looking at Jefferson Park. Also, it might be at the annex at some point, but the park will give us the ability to promote the new, the gym memberships as well as the weightlifting equipments that's there and allow people to see the, what we have in the relate, as it relates to health and workout activities within our rec center. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. As it relates to the Park Lane Elementary School closure, I'll say that, you know, some, one of the board are characterizing accountability as force and have said that they were forced to build Conley Hills. At the meeting on Thursday, I'll be recounting a history of actually what happened. And Fulton County Schools actually told all of the voters, the residents in Fulton County in two thousand sixteen, that they were gonna rebuild Conley Hills and then tried to reneg on that promise. And so, if accountability is considered force, then the force of accountability will be with them. It was, it's still not built. And they are now choosing to build a school a few blocks away from another elementary school on land that they already own. And if they were gonna do that, they could've done that in two thousand sixteen. But Catherine Maddox, who was a strong advocate and champion for our community, would be in our schools, advocate for our schools, speak up and stand up for our schools regardless of whether the votes were there or not. That was a part of her work. And to date, they still haven't built the school, and now they're trying to build it across near another elementary school. So, it's unfortunate that some would characterize that as force when literally it's accountability and ensuring that they do what they told the voters that they would do in two thousand sixteen. But aside for that, that conversation, a conversation about closing Park Lane has continued to come up over the years. And, and you know, we get the community engaged and then it goes away. And then, so this whole notion of low enrollment, and if they close a school in the south, they gotta close a school in the north. If they close a school in the north, they gotta close a school in the south. Like, we're not looking for equality on this. We are looking at, I think the low enrollment is pretext for what they've always wanted to do. The school has not been well-maintained, and it has not been included in a splat, e-splat. So, they have an education special purpose local option sales tax that they asked the residents of Fulton County to allow a penny tax to be charged so that they can do replacements of schools in addition to all the money they get from property taxes. And Park Lane replacement school has not been a part of that because I don't think there was ever commitment to that. And so, the meeting is on this Thursday. At, as Councilwoman Shropshire said, South Learning Center, Thursday at six PM. The address is forty twenty-five Flat Shoals Road. If you support our schools, your presence will mean so much to show that there are people in the community that care about what happened to that school. One of the board members is having a community meeting tomorrow at four PM. I'll still be at work, but unfortunately, and also unfortunately, it's in Haightville, at Haightville Elementary, when they're talking about closing Park Lane Elementary. So, if we wanna have that discussion tomorrow at a community meeting, we have to go to the City of Haightville and have that conversation versus being able to have that conversation at Park Lane. So, I invite you to, again, show up in number, record number on Thursday at the Fulton County School Board Meeting at six PM this Thursday, September the nineteenth. South Learning Center, forty twenty-five Flat Shoals Road. Do we have any executive session meeting minutes? I meant, do we have any executive session items? I don't went all the way through the meeting, executive session meeting to minutes, legal.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. I have four litigation to real estate.
Four litigations to real estate.
Four litigations to real estate. I have four litigation to real estate.
To real estate.
I know we definitely have at least one personnel. Anything else from council? So, that's two personnel, we have any others?
Two personnel, okay, two personnel.
Oh, there is two.
Three, three personnel?
Yes.
Three personnel.
Yeah, we definitely have two. And then council member.
So, that's.
Cummins had another one. So, that's three personnel, four litigation and four real estate.
So, say that again.
Three personnel.
Three personnel, four litigation and three real estate.
Four real estate.
Four real estate. Did I say it right? Wait, did I say it right?
Yeah, just put motion on the front of it.
I make a motion.
That we recess.
That we recess into executive session for three personnel, four real estate and four legal.
Litigation.
Litigation.
It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. We're in recess.
Motion to reconvene?
It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the Georgia Power easement for over property located at thirty-eight hundred North Kermer Strive.
So moved.
Is there a second? Been moved improperly seconded any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the quitclaim D. transferring property to Maple Haven. Don't need to put the amount on the record. Motion to appro-, approve the quitclaim D. transferring property to Maple Haven for eighty-one thousand, two hundred dollars.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is in the matter of Juana Colton versus City of East Point. Proceed as discussed in executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion?
Question.
Council member Butler.
Which one was the Juana Colton case?
It's not the one that you're concerned about. That's Also Brook.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to refuse defense pursuant to Ordinance Section four dash one dash two three four A one in case number twenty-four CV zero zero seven five four seven. Is there a second? Yeah. Before I call for the question, Councilwoman Shropshire, you just had to state on the record, press your mic.
I'm going to.
Oh, you're recusing.
I'm recusing myself from this vote.
Alright. All those in favor? All those opposed? We need roll call, please.
Yes.
Alright. Next up is in the matter of Working America versus City of East Point. Need a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session. It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Roll call.
Yes.
In the matter of Also Brook versus City of East Point, need a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session. Although, any, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Roll call.
Yes.
Alright. Next up is motion to approve the recommendation to, from the city attorney to hire Cheryl Freeman as a deputy city attorney at one hundred and twenty thousand dollar annual salary. It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is motion to end the contract with Sumter Consulting. Is that the name of the company? I gotta pull it up. You got it? I don't have my laptop up. I had something recently. Motion to end the contract with Sumter Local Government Consulting for interim city manager services effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Question, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're in discussion?
Yes, discussion. It's my thought that, I thought we said we were gonna do it on the fifteenth.
No, we said the fourteenth, thirty days from today. I mean, it's two o'clock if we wanna be technical. But we talked about the, we discussed the fourteenth. Everybody, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is we need a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the city council to initiate an investigation pursuant to City Charter Section two dash two zero two into the allegations in the complaints made by two department heads against the interim city manager. Is there a motion? To be completed by October seventh, twenty twenty-four. Is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Wiggins, I think that covers everything we had. I just realized we had two more real estate that we didn't discuss. They were, Mr. Brown, are the two real estates time sensitive? At council, we'd have to recess and go back in. I forgot about those two.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
We need a motion to, I'm gonna ask you to withdraw that motion 'cause we need to approve the executive session meeting minutes.
I make the motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes.
So moved, is there a second? It's been moved improperly seconded any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
It's been moved improperly seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.